It looks good, right? Alicia, ready to go?
Good.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. This is the Hideout Utah Town Council Regular Meeting, October 10th, 2024. My name is Phil Rubin. I'm the mayor. This meeting is both in person as well as streamed on both Zoom and YouTube Live. I'm calling the meeting to order and I'm going to take role. So let's start with Chris Byer.
I'm here.
Okay. Could you say that again, Chris? Please, sorry.
I am here.
That's better. Ralph Severini?
I'm here.
Jonathan Gunn?
I'm also here.
Bob Nadelberg?
Here.
And Carol is excused. But we do have a quorum, so we can continue. There's some adjustments to the... Well, I don't know. Do we need to do... I'm gonna push them anyway. So there's a couple of adjustments to the agenda. I'll cover that now. I'm gonna move the approval of minutes to the end. Because we've got Bob for a little bit, then we lose him, and then we'll have him again. So I just assume if we have him, I'd like to have him here for the the discussion and agenda items, and we can do the minutes at the end when he gets a chance to reconnect. So I'm gonna push those to the end. The second thing that's going to be moved or shifted is the item number four on the fee and rate schedule. There was a late feedback from the legal side on that item, where most of the changes in that have to do with Golden Eagle. Golden Eagle has requested that we defer that because we're still in discussion about who's going to own what utilities and so forth, and Golden Eagle and Polly agreed to that deferment. So we will not cover item four tonight. That'll be pushed to the November meeting, since this is October. All right? So, and then item four on the agenda list, the follow-up items from the minutes will also get pushed to the end when we do the minutes. So we'll start with public input, and before I open the floor to everyone, there's a couple of... The sheriff would like to make a comment on the recent tragedies at the State Park entrance. And I don't know, is he on? Alicia?
I don't see him on. I think Jan's texting him right now to see if he can join.
Okay, and then we've got, I guess Kim Dickerson is on. Let me allow Kim to speak. Kim is a candidate for council who's requested the chance to speak during public input today, so. Kim, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Rubin. I appreciate your time. I am Kim Dickerson. I appreciate this opportunity to address the hideout community today. I am also, not only am I a candidate, but I am also your current school board representative, so I am the incumbent. I represent East Heber and the Jordanell area. So I just kind of want to tell you about some things that I have done and report back about some things about our school district. Since becoming a candidate, a school board member, I've worked to foster a relationship with the Jordanell community. I've worked to implement a Jordanell Listening Town Hall meeting that we hold about every six months. Jan has been there. I've met Carol there. I think Chris has been there maybe once or twice, but that's just something that we have been working on. It's a meeting that includes the sheriff's office, the county council members, public works. So we've had Luke Searle and I have worked together on this, and we invite all different hideout comes to the meeting every month, and and we just sit there and we listen to the residents of Jordanell, and we try to answer their questions, or we take issues back to the table and try to resolve any issues that the community may have. So that's just something that's been done. So I really appreciate you allowing me to join this meeting because it's something that, again, it's taken some time to get into these, you know, get to know people and foster relationships. So I'm hoping in the future that you'll allow me to come back periodically and just report report on behalf of the school district. One thing I want to do is introduce you to, well, a thing that we're calling Education Elevated. It's Wasatch County School District Celebration of the Students Outstanding Achievement and Improving Student Performance. You may or may not have heard about this. We've been trying to inform the community of this. It's been a little bit of a campaign for us to let the community know how our students are doing. And in less than a decade, the district has become one of the highest achieving school districts in the state. Last year, we outperformed our students, outperformed the state in every area, and earning a number one spot in Language Arts, number three in math, and number seven in Science Proficiency. So our students are doing very, very well. However, we pride our district in this, but we didn't do it alone. Our success results from partnerships with students, teachers, parents, staff, and our supportive community members. Wasatch County is a community that values education, and our residents and businesses have supported us enthusiastically in this. Your role as community members in this success cannot be overstated, and I just want to take this opportunity to express my gratitude for the community's support in our students' education. Education Elevated is our opportunity to share our success and thank our community partners, which includes you. The second thing that I want to talk to you about is just my job as a school board member. My job is to ensure that students receive a quality education, make decisions that benefit the students, teachers, parents, and the community, and represent the community's interests in educational matters. Our future lies in the education of our students. They're the ones that are going to be taking care of us in the future. As we age, they are the ones that are going to be our physical therapists, our nutritionists, our doctors, our nurses. So it is important to our school district and to myself that our students get a high-quality education. I prioritize issues that impact students and the community when making decisions for our school district. My priority is to ensure quality programs are funded, that money is spent in the classrooms, and that your tax dollars are handled prudently, and teachers are well-paid. That is something that's very important for us, to us. One of our biggest challenges is keeping and retaining quality teachers in our school district. As you know, it's very costly to live in our community, and so it's important for our teachers to teach in the community that they live in. I want to tell you that among the 41 schools district, 41 school districts statewide, we are ranked fourth highest in average teacher salaries and the third highest in first-year teacher wages. Still, again, we live in a costly community, and we just want to be able to take care of our teachers and retain the high-quality ones. Another couple more pieces of information I want to share with you is that most of our budget goes to salaries and benefits. And then another interesting fact is of the 41 public school districts in the state of Utah, Wasatch County School District keeps the highest percentage of general funds in the classrooms. Something for you to know. That's important for you to know. There's some misinformation out there about like how much of our funds go to teacher salaries, and so I just wanted to share this information with you so that you know exactly how much of your tax dollars are being spent on our teachers, on our students, and in the classrooms. So finally, I just want to say thank you. I want to thank Jan McCosh and for helping me just foster this relationship with Hideout and get me in on your agenda so that I can introduce myself. I'm looking forward to future meetings. Thank you, Mayor Rubin, and thank you, Alicia, for communicating via email. And if there are ever any questions, I would hope that you would reach out to me personally. I'll just give you my number. Jan also has my number. You can ask her for it, but it's 435-901-9506, and I am always there for a call. You can also email me at Kimberly.Dickerson@wasatch.edu. And I also have a Facebook, School Board Facebook page, and you can just type in Kimberly Dickerson, Wasatch School Board. So thank you for your time, and I look forward to being able to answer any questions that you may have in the future.
Hey, thank you, Kim, for introducing yourself. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have we heard from the sheriff?
Yeah, I texted him. He was expecting the minutes first, so I'll...
Okay. All right.
Phil, can I stop you there? I thought we, you know, I didn't know Patrick Hayes myself, but my wife did on the trails, and he's a very athletic guy. I thought we'd have a moment of silence. I don't know if we've had any tragedy. Certainly not the last seven years since I've been here, so maybe we deserve to, you know, have a, you know, moment of silence for Patrick's passing.
Okay, Ralph, we can do that. All right, let's take a minute and take a moment of silence. Okay. Thanks, Phil. So we haven't heard from the sheriff, so we'll look for public input from anyone else on the that's on the phone tonight, or, sorry, on the Zoom tonight, or in the room who would like to make a comment for any item not listed on the agenda. And you do that by using the raise your hand functionality if you're on the Zoom, or if you're in the room, raise your hand, and I'll get somebody in the room to acknowledge you. Chris? Your hand is up, so.
Yes, hello. Good evening. Sorry, I was a little bit late joining. The reason for that is that we had an incident at the top of my driveway with Comcast installing their lines. So they managed to break my fiber connection to my house today. So I just wanted... Well, I wanted to let folks know that that could happen to them. I'm still struggling with All West to figure out when they're going to come out and try to fix it. So do we have any... Well, I wanted to let people know that... Do we have any idea of what's happening with the Comcast installation and you know, what?
They have a permit, Chris. I don't know where they are in the process. I'm not close enough to it. Dan's on. He may know. This is not the first incident we've had with Comcast at this point. I'm prepared to... Let's at least, Dan, let's at least get them in a meeting, and I'm prepared to pull their permit if you think that's appropriate until they get some better oversight, because they also broke a gas line, Chris, earlier.
Oh, okay. Yes, I think it's worth looking into to, you know, see if there's enough, I guess, incidents
Yeah.
to pull their permit, but it's, you know, impactful.
Yeah.
And, you know, they've... I talked to the crew. You know, they were sorry. I forgave them, but, you know, they...
Bigger person than me.
What was that?
It's bigger than me.
Well, what am I gonna do? I mean, they didn't mean to do it. Their explanation was it wasn't marked properly. And I don't know if that's true or not true, but regardless... Yeah, go ahead, Phil.
I'm saying we've had all the the marking people out. I mean, unless there's no orange lines on your road, it should have been marked.
Yeah, I have some photos, so, I mean, we can compare the markings to where the cables, my fibers pulled out. But I just wanted to let you know it's happening, and it sounds like they're, they broke a gas line. That's pretty serious. And, yeah, I appreciate it if you guys would just look into it. Meantime, I'm gonna try to resolve my own personal issue, because you know, there's no internet, you can't work.
Yeah.
Fortunately, we have a backup T-Mobile internet that we just happen to still have, and that's what I'm on now.
Wow.
All right, so Dan?
I've talked to the Comcast guy a couple days ago about the gas line. That one was actually not marked. The ELM that works for the gas company did not mark it.
Okay.
They completely missed it, so those guys didn't know it was there. And the marks have to be within two feet. If they're off within two feet, then they're considered not marked correctly. This is the only the third, the the one gas line they hit was with a shovel. The other one was the big one, and then Chris is the only other one I've heard of that they've had issues with, and they've been really good to fix them quickly, or at least let people know. The gas line issue, it takes so much time because the fire department and the police have to be on site the entire time. Because in Saratoga Springs, 20, 15 years ago or so, they hit a gas line. It filled people's houses up. They went in the basement to light the the water heater in the house blew up and killed the homeowner and the and the gas worker. So they're super, super careful with gas because they've had, they've had other people also nick a line, not pay attention, and blow the excavator out of the ground. So gas lines are a lot different than fiber. And, yeah, it is something that I've talked to them about. If you want me to call them back and have another conversation, but as much as they've done, they've not had too many incidents. And these kind of things are going to have incidents, no matter how good they've marked, and no matter how good they are, they're going to hit stuff because it just happens in construction. I know that's not the answer everybody wants, but that unfortunate things happen like that, so.
All right. What I'd like you to do, Dan, is at least go look at Chris's specific situation, see if it was marked correctly.
I can do that.
And because they, you know, if it was, then why did they do it?
Well, and the other thing is, is the, here's how it works. If it's not within two feet, the worst part is, is it's a huge inconvenience for Chris, but it's not going to cost her anything. The, if it's within the two feet and they hit it, then that company will pay to have it fixed. If it's outside of the two feet...
Well, I understand that. I just want to, again, my concern is if it's inside and they hit it, then why did they do that? If they're not paying attention, and that concerns me, that's all.
Okay.
But the other thing is, if we, if every one of these incidents is a result of improper marking, then we have a problem. Then maybe we can order a remark. We can, like, put them on hold, have everything remarked.
Yep. Good point, Chris.
I will come look at it and see if it's marked correctly.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks, Chris. The sheriff is on, so I'd like to let him speak next. So Sheriff Rigby, you're welcome to speak up.
Can you hear me now?
We can, sir.
Oh, very good. How is everyone doing this evening?
Great.
Good. Hey, I was hoping to give you an update on this investigation of Mr. Pat Hayes. Is that something that you'd like me to do right now, or what are your thoughts?
Yes. This would be the time to do it, because we didn't put it on the agenda, so this is the best place to cover it.
Great. Okay, so so Pat was killed on September 25th, and so that was two weeks ago last night. It was two weeks ago that we were starting the investigation and starting to process the scene and starting to do the autopsy and all of those kinds of things. And so in that amount of time, we've got about five areas to update you on. One of them has to do with the suspect vehicle. So we've been saying from the beginning that, oh, most likely this is a Jeep of some kind, maybe a Gladiator, maybe a Wrangler, that's also the Rubicon model. And right now, the update in this area is that we we are looking at a Gladiator and not any other models. So we're hoping to focus the public on on a Jeep Gladiator. The second piece is that there was evidence that Pat's vehicle had damage to it as part of some kind of a road rage incident. And now that we're two weeks past that date, everyone knows that it doesn't take long to get your vehicle repaired and and to make alterations, if that's what you're gonna do. And so while it's still possible that the suspect vehicle could have damage on it, we're asking the public not to exclusively focus on Gladiators that have front-end damage. Instead, we're after tips for Gladiators that were seen in the area or that frequent the area. So that's the second, the second thing. Update has to do with 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 any possible damage. The next one has to do with with the route. Really, so Pat has a son named Christian. The family is open to their names being used and and also that, you know, in saying Pat was on his way home because he was close to being home, that's how he typically would would get to his house is from 2:48 on to Shoreline and then Ross Creek and into his house. And so that night, September 25th, it was a Wednesday, and he was with his adult son in Midvale. His adult son's name is Christian. And Pat left Christian's home in Midvale at 10:30. And then I can kind of take you through each of the the times and places, but we've been able to to track Pat's driving route, mostly using his cell phone data, but also some LPR data. Home is just drive directly home through mid, several locations. He does not stop. It's all continuous driving. He gets on the 215 and goes east. He goes up to the I-80 junction and goes up Harley's. We track him going by the Salt Lake County firearms range there on the north side, if you know where I'm talking. And then also coming down Harley's, we have him passing Jeremy Ranch. He stays on 80 the whole time. Now, the part of the information we're trying to get out here, and we're gonna slow down a little bit in his driving route, is that he's going freeway speeds through from Midvale until he gets to the Kimball Junction area. And essentially, when he passes under the underpass there at Kimball's Junction, he stays on 80 based on the information we have right now. But when he gets on the other side of the overpass, it takes him a minute and a half to go 400 yards. And so prior to that, on the other side of the overpass, he went 400 yards in 12 seconds. And so we don't have the answer for that at this point in time, and we're looking for the public's help in understanding that better. But essentially, he is delayed. It doesn't seem that he stops. It just seems that he slows way, way down and that it takes him a minute and a half to make it 400 yards. But then the speed of the vehicle increases, and he, he heads continues on to 40, and then from 40 to 248, like you would expect, turns left at 248, onto 248 and and travels 248 until he gets to Shoreline Drive.
Was he, was he?
Instead of going to his home on Shoreline, then he pulls... I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, no, I'll wait till we're done. Sorry.
Closer to the gatehouse at the State Park entrance. And so we have camera footage of that. Now, the camera footage, it gives us some clues, but it's not super helpful in trying to identify a suspect or the suspect's vehicle. So this camera footage can be helpful in a prosecution, and overall, our prosecutors and our investigators are concerned at this point that releasing the camera footage impacts the prosecution negatively, at least potentially, more than it does help us and the public in finding this Gladiator and the person that's in it. And so it's kind of a judgment call that could potentially change down the road. But honestly, do you still have time for about three minutes that I can walk you through what the camera shows?
Sure.
So essentially, what the camera shows is Pat's Volkswagen comes into view. You see the headlights. It's all dark on the camera, and falling behind him right then is a second vehicle. Pat pulls to the right before he gets to the gatehouse and he parks. He gets out of his driver's door and walks back to the suspect vehicle. That suspect vehicle comes, it makes a movement that's erratic and somewhat comes towards him. I do think it's fair to say that he's either trying to hit Pat or he's trying to intimidate Pat. He definitely, it's not just, his foot comes off the brake or something. He is is making a movement towards Pat, and it goes forward quite a ways and to the right. So that gets Pat moving off to the left so he doesn't get hit. And then the suspect driver does that again. And what that does is it moves Pat pretty much out of the view of the camera. And so backing up just one step, Pat's vehicle with the headlights and the suspect vehicle's headlights are shining directly into the surveillance camera. And so they wash, they wash out what you would otherwise see if it were daylight. And so what we've been doing is trying to enhance that footage so that we can, we can see better. But to date, the best that we can do still doesn't help us anymore with the suspect vehicle, especially a license plate. We're not able... Anymore with the suspect vehicle, especially a license plate. We're not able to get yet. Um, a color, we're not able to get yet. Uh, anything about people inside, we're not able to get yet. And and then with uh. With where, which which door or window the shot comes from, from this Gladiator Gladiator. We're not able to determine that yet. And so um for that reason, there have been a couple of of uh news stations that have requested. Um, the video and with the prosecutors, we've decided. Um, to use the exception in the law having to do with ongoing investigation. Uh, and not give that out yet um because of the potential. Of it impacting the prosecution negatively. And when we weigh that against what it could get us with identifying the vehicle and the suspect, it just, it's not helpful at this point. So it's a judgment call on that, but that's where that part sits. Essentially then, then Pat um, it's a one shot. So at autopsy. Um, I'll tell you that I think everyone understands uh. It's pretty general knowledge that the State Medical Examiner's Office determines um. The cause and manner, two separate things, of an individual's death. And and if needed, does an autopsy. In Pat's case, they did do a full autopsy um as far as cause. Um, they determine, they're determining it to be homicide. And when it comes to manner of death, they uh they are are determining that to be. A gunshot wound. And so essentially, there was, we can tell from the autopsy. That Pat was killed uh with one gunshot, one bullet. Uh, that went into his chest, hit vital organs, and the round stayed there. Uh, in his chest and that was recovered. And so we are also, as far as update, to the public, uh able to say that it is um. The State Crime Lab tells us that it is a forty-five auto handgun. And that that's what we're looking for. So so those are our major updates. We really appreciate the haze and and uh. Sue, the fiance fiance and and Christian, the adult son. Pat has two brothers, uh three brothers that have um we've been working with. And they pretty much all live in the area. Anyway, so those, that's where the investigation sits, at least the uh. The public part of the information of.
Thank you, Sheriff. I think um. You want to tell anybody on the call as well as for the record, what if anybody has any information, how to how to reach out?
Thanks for that. Yes, so we have um. Individuals twenty-four seven that can answer this line, so it's not just a recording. And we're asking those with um tips or information for us to call four, three, five. Six, five, four, one, four, one, one. Really what we're after, it is the general, if you saw something, then um then please call us and tell us. But it's more than that, um especially in that. Um, on that I eighty and Kimball's Junction area. Um, if there's any video that people might have from their vehicles uh for them to please. Review that and uh give us a call. A lot of times, people don't know. That something that they have captured is actually helpful. Until you put all the pieces together. And so so really, the the caller, the need there is that. A lot of semi trucks, a lot of other vehicles like Teslas and others have have dash cam built into them or or built into the vehicle. And uh and whether the person, the driver, the occupants saw something or not um. Could be helpful or not, but then what their their video uh their vehicle video may show could also be very helpful to us. Especially in that eleven forty-five to, sorry, ten forty-five to a little after eleven P M. On September twenty-fourth.
Sheriff, this is um Councilman Severini. Thanks for that update. Uh, two quick questions. Um, is the investigation being run by the county, the state co- cooperation between the two? How is the investigation being handled? So that's the first question.
Okay. Yeah, thanks. So um the investigation is being handled by the Wasatch County Sheriff's Office. And we get other agencies to assist us. So we are part of a task force which um is called the Wasatch Back Major Crimes Task Force. And essentially, that's made up of um Park City Police Department, Summit County. Utah Attorney General's Office, Heber City Police Department and our agency. And it's a force multiplier is the first reason that we do that. And you can go from, you know, our five detectives to more than forty. When all of those agencies combine and uh and you can have that many detectives that now can work that case. Uh, for the next twelve to twenty hours just devoted to it. And so it is, our detective is the case agent, the responsible. Uh, officer for it, and we are the lead to it, but there are others who assist us.
Thanks. I in in second, thanks. That's a lot of folks, I'm guessing, with a lot of qualifications, so. Um, not only good luck, maybe the second question is uh. I understand through conversations that the alleged vehicle did not jump back on to uh. You know, uh, to forty-eight, but went right, you know, may have been driving through town. There might be additional camera footage even from, you know, door views. Have have you gotten enough? From that potential segment of people that may, if that person, if that alleged vehicle was. Traveling Longview or something like that. And how do we help? Can we help at the town layer? You know, uh i- improve the chances of you getting additional video?
Great. Thank you for asking. So we canvassed the area, meaning we had um detectives go door to door. Um, some people, they they were able to talk to that night. Uh, went back the next day. Um, so there was follow-up um door to door. Other than that, we are, yes, definitely still in the mode of. Of needing and wanting and accepting any uh any. Uh, door cam footage that people might have, or whether they saw or heard. Now, to, all of that could be helpful, yes. Um. You know, I I I won't speak to just one piece of evidence, but it seems that. That there could be um. Some people in the community or or in the state that that are saying, no, he for sure didn't go towards Camus. Um, ca- because of this reason, but we're not in the mode of of uh. Of saying that. We haven't said that. We're not trying to limit. Uh, for sure, he went one way or the other. We do know the suspect vehicle backed out uh from the Ross Creek uh drive area. But then after that, um. It's still, it's still open as far as which road he went out on. And so, yes, if there's hideout residence um. Uh, that could potentially have that, we give us a call, we'll come over, um, any of those kinds of things.
So Egress could have gone anyway, then I guess is what you're saying.
After backing out of Ross Creek, yes.
Thanks.
Sheriff, this is Councilmember Gunn. I also have a question. Um, does anybody recover to spent casing? And if so, is there anything? On that casing fingerprint, DNA, yada, 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 that is it all helpful?
Yeah, thanks for asking. Um, we're, we're really careful when it comes to certain pieces of evidence. Um. At the beginning, especially, you know, you you're very um. Protective with your evidence because there's some things that suspect or the suspects. Know and we know and only we know and they know. And so if we. If we give it to the public also, then um. It makes identification of the person uh more difficult. But yes, it is one of the challenges when we start getting weeks and months into a case like this that. That we uh as part of um a conscious decision to. To to keep investigating and trying to get the leads and the breaks that we need. Then we end up giving some information that we wouldn't have given at the beginning. So to answer your question, uh, no one, no one finding a shell casing. Um, at this time, and at the same time, um. We, we're really careful not to put that out, especially at the beginning, because um. Uh, it it can, it can hamper us down the line. And so I know we're in a public meeting and all of that. Um, I'm aware. Just trying to be transparent with things. Um, so to answer your question, that's where it is.
Thank you.
If there are any other uh concerns, if the mayor has anything that uh. You'd like me to come over and and speak um one-on-one about or any of those things, I'm definitely open to that. We're wanting to just uh be reporting um and. Be helpful and to give information to the public as well. And so if you see anything that we can be doing there to do that. Anything that's obvious or what you're hearing, please, please let me know on that so that we can be working together with it.
Well, thank, thank you very much, Sheriff, for taking the time to bring the community up to date. And we, we know you guys are working hard on this. Um, and uh truly appreciate that uh that you, you're. You're gonna get to the bottom of it. I I have confidence.
That is our commitment. Would you mind, Mayor, if I mention one thing in just thirty seconds?
Sure.
Okay, there's going to be some continued work there um over the next few days, especially um. In the dark, so meaning like eleven P M. That is because we're trying to take um. Similar vehicles out there and recreate things and see how it works on camera videos and stuff. And so. We mentioned that because um. Because the public in that area, our community can be saying what's going on there, or. Do we have a reason to be concerned or things like that? And just know that that is us and uh. And there isn't a reason for uh some specific concern there. That's us following up and recreating. Some of the scene and those kinds of things while the while the the night and the weather are similar and stuff like that.
Okay, thank you for letting us know. Chris, did you have a question? I saw your hand come up and then it went down.
Uh, it came up and down twice because of. Both times my question was answered before I could get the floor, so thank you.
Okay, uh, so. Uh, Sheriff, in in a, in a case of closing the barn door after the horses have escaped, um. It seems as if that's, now that that's such a busy intersection and an entrance to hideout. You know, we, we could add another camera. Obviously, it doesn't help you now, but it might help with stuff in the future. As you know, we've got, we have cameras at the roundabout um. For the town, but we could certainly, at the time when we put those in, that that entrance was not a a through road. So um I'm thinking it might be strategic to go ahead and add a second camera. Uh, at the, at the uh Ross Creek entrance area, since so much traffic is going through there.
Totally agree. There's probably some other areas like that that we could discuss offline, but yes, thank you.
Okay, let's do that. I'd be uh.
Thank you.
Happy to help with that. Okay, is there anything?
Um, I I know that you had a moment. I know that you had a moment of of silence uh for Pat and his and his family and. And I just wanna echo the same uh feelings, uh condolences and our. And our our sadness and our commitment to finding justice for the haze here and um. And love them and and we wanna help.
Thank you again.
Yeah, thanks, Sheriff.
Okay. We'll let the sheriff get back to business. And again, thanks, thanks so much for all you do for for the community. It's 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 not an easy task, I know. Um. We're still in public input and so uh again, if there's any other. Comments from the public uh regarding non uh. Uh, agenda items, this would be the time to raise your hand. And I don't see any hands coming up on the Zoom. Anything in the conference room? Is that a no?
No.
Okay. I'm going to close public input and move to uh the agenda items. So the uh, the first item we have, I have to make that a little bigger, so give me a second. I'm sure nobody can read that. Um, is that, the council is likely aware. We have been using uh Mr. Jake McHarg as our um treasurer. His time has been great, very great, helpful for us, but he's. His other duties have become such that he can no longer serve us. And so uh we, Jan has been working diligently to identify. Uh, a a new candidate for treasurer and has done that. Um, and she's in the council room tonight. Uh, I'll let Jan take it from here and introduce her, and then we can talk about. And you can ask any questions that you may have, and then we can talk about whether you're prepared to uh bring her in as the treasurer. So Jan?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Um, we're, first of all, really grateful to Jake for. Um, his service with the town and. Um, he is going to move to a status of advisor, so will be available to us on an hourly. Type of arrangement should we need him. So thank you, Jake. Um, and um. I am actually not in Town Hall, so Alicia is going to introduce or swear in our new candidate. And um. We will proceed that way, so.
Well, we we first have to pass the resolution, I believe, to do that.
Okay.
And so I just didn't know if you wanted to introduce her background. You want to have Jamie's?
Sure.
That's what I'm trying to talk about when I'm talking about introducing her.
Absolutely. So the mayor and I met with Jamie Heiner, and she comes. Uh, she's got some excellent skills. She's got sixteen years of municipal experience. Um, she's a candidate for the CPA exam upcoming. Um, I don't know if she's registered for that or or not yet, but um. Uh, a master's degree, um, very capable. She's got some. Uh, great municipal experience that we're looking forward to utilizing and um. Thank you, Jamie.
So Jamie, why don't you say a few words, introduce yourself to the council, and we'll see if the council has any questions for you.
Um, yeah, so I'm Jamie Heiner. I um am from um Ogden City. I've been. Um, municipal, like Jan was saying, for sixteen years. I started out at South River City as the treasurer. Um, and and basically their their finance, the finance department there. I run utility billing, um auditing, budgeting, um the whole gamut payroll. And then I got to move on to North Ogden City. I started out there as the treasurer, and then I became the H R director. Um, and the treasurer there, and then currently the finance director. Um, so very familiar with uh the needs of the city. I'm excited to be part of this town. Um. It's going towns, that's super fun. I totally geek out in accounting. I start nerding out, um. Uh, you know, Excel spreadsheets and whatnot. uh you know, Excel spreadsheets and whatnot, so. Um, married, I have my kids are grown, so we're empty nesters and I have six.
Sorry, were you finished? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, I just.
Not trying to cut you off, I'm just, I'm not seeing what's going on in the room, so I'm I'm doing this remotely. I apologize, but. Um, okay, any questions from council for uh for Jamie?
I have a couple.
Go ahead then, Ralph.
Yeah, hey, Jamie, uh nice to meet you. I've only heard um excellent things um from a couple of people, so uh cause I had I had two questions. One is, what's your, uh what what do you think your time commitment out of your work week will be? Cause I don't think it's a full time, so you're dividing time. Um, and uh I'm assuming, and I think I know the answer to this, but you know, a lot of the, a lot, a lot of the information that we have continues to reside in Katie Shepley, so I hope you've had a chance to connect with her, so there is a lot of cooperation between the two of you, so um could you address those two points?
Yes, I believe I got to meet her tonight. She stopped in and introduced herself for a few minutes and and uh yes, she sounds like she's, she'll be a great uh great person to lean on. Um, and then I'm under the impression that right now it'd be uh anywhere between four to five hours a week. Uh, working with Carrie and and helping out, you know, those needs that she has along with being being treasurer, so that's what I'm told, it's about four to five hours a week for now.
Thanks, Jamie.
Um, I understand we don't yet have a job description. That is something I'd really like to see. Um, is that something in process or something we anticipate having shortly?
That's a question for Jan, but I I was under the impression you have a job description for the town treasurer.
So, no, um, we have so many things going on in the town and um we would like to get together um with Katie, Carrie and I and discuss you know, how do we utilize her strengths to the best of the ability and um we have an audit coming up and and we thought that would be a great way to get her up to speed. Um, Carrie does a great job with the audit, but we would like to get her up to speed efficiently. And so there are, there are a few tasks that that we have like set aside, but we don't want to overwhelm her. I mean, sometimes joining the town is like a hazing ritual and we don't we don't want to scare her away. Um, and we're, we're just really grateful to have Jamie and her abilities and skills available to us. We have a water project that I want to discuss with her because she has, she has background in utilities. I mean, there are so many different things, so uh, yeah.
I would say that, you know, as as a minimum, there are a number of things that we are required to do by state law uh but through the treasurer's office.
Well, absolutely.
No, those are, those are the bare minimum of the expectations and those should be easily um uh consolidated and put into a description that can be shared with council.
Yes, absolutely. And one of those, you know, treasurer actually has a variety of duties and and um Jamie has been a treasurer, so she knows those duties. So um one of them is uh is understanding the cash uh flow and accountable for uh the pocketbook, so to speak, of the cash. So that is an assumed duty um and um.
Well, I mean, there's, there's a whole series of reports we have to do, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I would like, like to ask that um you would please uh pull together as a starting point, all the, all the legally required activities that our treasurer does. I mean, you know, we had, we had Jake. I thought we had a role description for him, so and somebody before that as well. So let's get that together and and get that out uh very quickly, please.
Yes, and um Jamie is scheduled to meet with us via Zoom on Tuesday upcoming. So um we look forward to to just welcoming her onboard. Think she'll be a great addition to the staff. Thank you.
Other, other questions for either Jan or Jamie? Okay, um so, you know, we are, we're in a transition here. I think Jan has spoken with a number of you um individually uh and shared her background and and skills. Uh, you know, I did meet with her as well. Uh, she's got a great resume. Um and so I think it's disappointing that we don't have a a a role description in front of you and we'll, we'll work to remedy that, but I would appreciate your consideration of um of this resolution. Um, so that we don't go um a month more without uh without the resource.
Would it be possible to um be assured that we'll have a job description in the next seven days, ten days?
I think that's, I think that's more than reasonable, Jonathan. I think you can again, most of this stuff, the the primary elements are all defined by state law. It shouldn't be very difficult to pull that together. There's, there's there's, I don't know how many municipalities in Utah, most of whom have that job description posted on their um on their sites, so it should be uh should be easy enough to do. So Jan, let's make that a priority.
Sure, happy to.
I just think that hiring someone on a job description is a recipe for trouble, so to the extent we can pull that together, um I I feel more comfortable.
Me as well.
I just want to add that we didn't have one when we appointed Jake as treasurer, right? So I think I do agree, we we do need that because I have the same questions, like I don't understand exactly. It sounds like the treasurer does very specific things for us, has to meet the state requirements. So like you mentioned, uh mayor, it should be easy, well, well, nothing's easy, but relatively easy to pull together. Um, but should that get, stand in our way of 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 appointing uh a new treasurer since we will have an opening? I- is there any reason we wouldn't? We we would want to wait for that?
I I'm, I'm think that we, since we've been operating this long without that, I think we can take the, take the chance to uh you know, both rectify the fact that we don't have a role description as well as bring in somebody who has certainly the uh the experiences to be able to do the role and help us even with that description. And I think, you know, maybe Cameron, you, you can help us as well with that. At least from the legal side.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. I was just looking up the code. I'll uh I'll shoot out an email for the code. It's ten, six, one, forty-one through one, forty-six.
So as a minimum, ten, six, one, forty-one through one, forty-six are 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 part of the, the role description. And we'll just reference, I think probably it makes sense to reference those sections if they are, if they're appropriate for the, for a town of our size, as opposed to having specific language for those, so we stay current with the state law, which we do with a lot of our code. Um, and it says, it says in here in the warehouse. But uh but we'll get that, we'll get that to everybody. So Jan, that's a, that's a priority over the next ten days.
Absolutely.
So, so Mayor, can we move on the resolution in lieu of the um
That's, that's
Job description?
That's up to you.
Or do we wait till the next voting cycle?
I I recommend that we move on it so that we can keep continuity.
But incorporating the job description as part of
Yeah, and we can incorporate the job description.
Yeah, as soon as we get that.
Soon as we have one that we're ready to lay out there, yes.
I would be prepared to vote so long as we will have a formal full job description in the next ten days.
You comfortable?
Yeah, in the future, I would be most appreciative if we could get like a resume and a job description before we vote, because
I, I, I was told that your resume, the resume had been shared. I didn't understand that. I'm sorry.
If it was in the packet, I missed it. But I don't think it
It was, I don't think it was either.
It's not in the packet. No, we wouldn't put it in the packet, but it would have been shared separately with you is what my, I was unders- understood, but okay. So it's a question for you guys, council. I'm sorry, we obviously didn't do the the groundwork that should have been done. Unfortunately, I've been out of pocket, as you know, uh for personal reasons. Um, so if you, if you would like to wait, then we can wait. It's your call. Um, I, again, my recommendation based on my time with, with the candidate, I think it's okay to move ahead, but if you're comf- if you're not comfortable, then let's, let's defer it. Let me know.
I need to Well, I'll make a motion i- if you need a motion, uh Mayor.
So I just, yeah, I either need a motion to uh adopt a resolution to move ahead, uh appointing the treasurer for the town of Hideout. Or, you know, let's just, we'll do it that way. We'll do it. If I can get a motion in a second, then we can do that, that way.
Well, I'll make the motion, but it has to be in light of the ten day requirement to get job description and any other material that related to um what uh this position is responsible for. Sorry?
Why don't you guys just make it condition, formally conditioned on that and then approve?
Who's that?
J D.
So J D, um, we're not, this isn't a public hearing, J D.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I mean, sure, sorry about that.
Yeah, J D, thanks for the comment, but I think we probably need like a, um a Cameron, you know, input here just to make sure we're squirreled away. How, how do we do this? If they're willing to move ahead with that condition, do we have to put that, do we do that condition as separate from the resolution or how do we do that?
Yeah, there's, there's really not a conditional appointment. Um, once a person is appointed, they, they serve until they're replaced. Uh, the condition is if, if the council is unhappy with um how things are being handled, they can unappoint someone. So there's, there's the ability to appoint and then there's the ability to unappoint. There's really not a conditional sort of function. I, I mean, I, I think, I think it can easily be done, so I don't anticipate that that would be an issue. Um, but I think it's, it's an up or down vote at this point.
Okay, thanks, Cameron. Um, well, Jamie, Jamie, just so you know, it's not, this is nothing personal. This is uh, this is us uh closing the barn door much too late, so uh nothing to do with you and your capabilities. Please don't take this as a personal attack.
Thanks, Matt.
Hey, this is Chris, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to um approve the resolution appointing the treasurer for the town of Hideout, Utah, and that being uh Jamie Heiner.
And I'll second it based upon all the good information that I did receive in the past ten years, so.
Okay, so uh we've got um so that was Ralph and Chris and so start with Jonathan?
Yes.
Okay, Bob, I know you're in transit. I don't know if you're with us or not. I don't see him on.
He had to drop off. He's on YouTube, just listening.
Okay, so, um, so then I'll go to Chris.
Yes.
And Ralph?
Yes.
Okay, so uh three is a quorum, votes unanimous. Uh, congratulations, Jamie. Welcome to the team. And you're, you're, you know, you, you know by the discussion tonight what our first goal is.
I would, I would also request that once the job description is finalized, to get distributed to the council.
Absolutely. As well as, as well as the uh the the C V, cause I didn't realize that that hadn't been presented either.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry?
Can I swear her in?
Yes, that's what I was getting to, Alicia.
Oh, okay. I just didn't want to forget.
So with the agreement on the resolution, we can now swear her in.
Hey. Jump up somewhere on the camera. Let's go over here. That's where I have something else, right? Okay. All right, if you raise your right hand, please. I state your name, I, Jamie Heiner. Do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, that I will support, obey and defend, I will support, obey and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of this state, and the Constitution of this state. And that I will discharge the duties of my office, and I will discharge, discharge the duties of my office with fidelity, with fidelity. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Jamie. Looking forward to working with you. Okay, thank you, Alicia. Let's uh, we now have uh Helen, are you still on? Yes, no, I don't even, yes, you're there.
I sure am.
So are you going to screen share? Are you just gonna talk? What's, what do you need to do?
I'm just going to talk.
Okay.
Okay, great.
So uh for the council's edification, I guess you've all had a conversation with Helen Langdon. You know who she is. Langdon, you know who she is. But um just in, for the case, for the purposes of the, for the interest of the public, Helen, you give a couple of minutes on on yourself and your team before you drop into what you're specifically doing for us.
You bet. So my name's Helen Langdon and I um have a company um called Langdon Communications and we specialize in supporting our clients' marketing and communications needs and um we have a strong track record in municipal government as well as corporate communications. Um, my background includes having spent nearly eight years uh working for the um sis- for Salt Lake City um for the former mayor, Ralph Becker, in a number of different roles, but communications uh director as well as um his press secretary and senior policy advisor. Uh, earlier in my career, I worked also in the federal government. I, I spent time working in Washington, D C at the White House and in Congress, um always in a communications capacity. And then um I've also, prior to founding my company, uh had a number of roles in um companies and sort of the private sector um in tech startups and uh what have you. So that is a little bit about me and um we work with clients all over the country. Um, but really my favorite clients and the ones that are closest to my heart are municipal um government clients. And it's, it's such a special uh uh type of work that you all do and it's very gratifying to have the opportunity to uh collaborate uh with um, you know, communities and and especially with the elected officials and leaders because you're, you just do incredible work um and often for not a lot of thanks or pay, but um you know, it's, it's very fun. So anyway, that's a little about me, Mayor, and if you'd like, I could just get into the meat of uh our discussion.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so again, it's just great to be with you all and um I'm welcome the chance to discuss some of our plans for enhancing the town of Hideout's communications efforts over the coming year. Um, as many of you know, over the past few months, I've had the privilege of conducting um so an in-depth audit of Hideout's communication strategies and initiatives. And through this process, I've been able to meet with many of you and have truly appreciated your insights and perspective on how we can continue to grow and strengthen the Hideout community uh and specifically the communications efforts together. Uh, I've connected with uh various town employees who also obviously play a crucial role in keeping our residents informed and engaged. And it's been really inspiring to see the dedication and passion that they have for their role in service to the town. Um, one of the recurring themes I've heard throughout these conversations is a a shared commitment to ensuring that communication serves as a cornerstone for building a strong, vibrant and healthy community in Hideout. And each of you who I had the opportunity to meet with expressed a desire to leverage better communication to enhance effectiveness in addressing the important challenges and opportunities that lie ahead. Uh, I also want to commend all of you for your collective vision, um for keeping Hideout Uh, I also want to commend all of you for your collective vision, um, for keeping Hideout's residents really well informed about the positive work that's being done by town leadership. Uh, this aligns beautifully with your goal of making Hideout one of the best places to live, work, and play in the Wasatch Valley. So to support these efforts, I've developed a communications plan that will guide, um, our work over the next year. And the plan is designed to help improve the flow of timely, accurate, and meaningful information between town officials and the diverse group of stakeholders who are integral to the current community's success. Uh, this communication plan is a collaborative tool and a living document so that we can continuously refine it and, and as our projects evolve and as we receive feedback from the community, we can find ways to, um, either further strengthen and, and our efforts and, and just generally do better work. So I'm really looking forward to working closely with all of you to ensure that, um, what, what we've created as a starting point meets the town's needs and sort of maximizes our collective impact. Uh, the recommendations in the plan are grounded in a few key considerations. Uh, one being a thorough analysis of what's currently working well and where we can improve our communications work, um, as well as the best practices observed in other communities that share similar characteristics with Hideout, and an honest evaluation of the resources that we have available to dedicate to these efforts, uh, as well as a forward-thinking approach to that positions Hideout for continued growth and success, and then sharing that our communication supports the professionalism and excellence of the municipal services and offerings that, that you all work so hard to deliver to the town. Uh, so in the interest of time, uh, I won't go through the entire plan tonight, but I'm eager to share a few highlights, uh, with you now, and then, uh, after the meeting, I'm putting a few, uh, finishing touches on and final edits on the plan, and then we'll get the, the full plan out, um, to everyone to review. And, and certainly you're always welcome to reach out to me individually if you have questions or comments or, you know, additional bits of feedback. Um, so in terms of the highlights of what you'll, you can expect to see, um, in our plan, uh, of course, um, a, a comprehensive communication strategy. So, um, I started by just kind of reporting out on the audit, um, and just trying to provide sort of a thorough analysis of, um, Hideout's current communications channels, um, and offering some recommendations for how we could enhance them, and, and, you know, comments on sort of what seems to be working and, and what, um, maybe isn't working quite as effectively. Um, as well as just, you know, uh, you know, the, the ultimate goal of the plan, which is really to hi- highlight Hideout as a gem in the Wasatch back with a growing community in proximity to prime locations like the Jordanale and Deer Valley. Um, so then another section of the plan goes into sort of our key goals and objectives. And one of the goals that I've heard from a lot of members that's reflected in the plan is to really improve our, um, strategic media relations. And so to shift from sort of more of a reactive, um, um, positioning as far as media relations, where we're just commenting when we get questions from the community and rarely, um, you know, going after specific media coverage to a much more proactive, um, focus where we're securing, you know, positive news stories about the good work of the community and all of you, um, and really helping build for the town of Hideout some strong relationships with key, uh, local media outlets. And so a goal in the plan would be to increase the visibility of the town, um, by hopefully, uh, the goal would be to secure approximately sort of once a month, some what we call earned media coverage or positive news stories over, you know, a year's time. So, you know, theoretically, uh, at least twelve positive news stories. Um, another piece of the plan involves just consistently gathering feedback from residents through, um, a variety of measures, but including, um, an annual survey to measure sort of our progress and sentiment of the community toward the work of the town. Um, and then another piece would be to enhance some of our communication channels that we currently rely on. So, um, part of that would be some propos- and a, a proposed adoption of some improved tools, um, for things like email management and a website redesign to create a better user experience and, and, uh, accessibility. Um, another piece of, of the plan is to transition our, um, e-newsletter into a more formal town newspaper to establish, um, some consistent communication and, and a mindset around like storytelling around the different, um, pieces of information, um, that we want to share out with the community. Um, and the plan also identifies like our tar- target audiences, so that we think about our focused communication strategy for various groups, residents, both full-time and part-time, the media developers, real estate professionals, government officials, communities outside of ours, and, and what have you. Um, it, we are taking, um, in the plan, a phased approach for implementation, um, where, you know, over the course of, uh, the year and, and kind of broken down into three phases, we'll, we'll, uh, implement different aspects of the plan. So it's not, you know, all, we're not trying to boil the ocean, but we're taking, you know, measured steps, um, as we go. Um, some of the other elements of the plan include community engagement programs and introducing, it was, this is one of the ideas that came from a count, a town council member, um, new initiatives, uh, like a coordinated neighborhood communication captains, and, um, monthly community events to really help build enhanced two-way communication and foster a greater sense of community. And then, um, you know, things like maintaining, um, good communication with adjacent communities, um, so that we can use our communication efforts to help align on shared community goals and, you know, pursuing collaborative, uh, opportunities where they exist. So ultimately, um, you know, I, I believe that the plan will help set the town up well for, you know, um, professionalizing its communications efforts and strengthening the community bonds, and ultimately just helping achieve, um, like a town's broader goals, um, and having a more supportive, uh, you know, stance in terms of communication. So like I said, I'm in the process of putting the final touches on it, and I'm really excited to share the document with you for your review and your insights. And I'm confident that with, um, the collective effort of every, you know, all of the town, um, employees as well as the, um, you know, elected officials, that we'll be able to really further elevate the, our communication efforts to meet and exceed the expectations of our community. So, um, thank you for your time, and I want to just, um, uh, you know, again, thank you for both tonight and for the time you've all spent with me, uh, leading up to now to help inform the work that, um, I've been doing on your behalf. That's it.
Thanks, Helen.
You're welcome.
I think we're looking forward to seeing the, the final package and maybe, uh, and then have a couple of, I don't, I don't know, I guess the best way to do it is probably just have, uh, a couple of smaller meetings with some of, some of council to, uh, review it and get questions and stuff, uh, come back and forth, get feedback. Or I don't know how you want to do that, but.
Yeah, I think that would be great. I think that would be really a good way to do it. And that was kind of what we'd envisioned at the beginning, but, you know, yeah.
Or we can do a work session and do a, or something like that. Um, whatever, whatever you and Jan cook up, we'll, uh,
Okay.
we'll attempt to.
Okay. And, uh, everyone, if there's specific questions or follow-up, I think everyone has my contact info. If you don't, you can certainly get it from Jan, and feel free to reach out to me directly with any thoughts or, you know, questions as we're in this kind of finalization moment, so. And like I said, too, just to, one more thing, um, I want to reiterate is, I say finalization, um, as far as like a work product to deliver back to you all, but as I mentioned at the beginning, it's really good to think about these type of, um, plans as living, breathing documents that you're sort of constantly iterating, you know, we're constantly working to improve the quality of, of what we're doing, um, as a town in the way of like professional communications and everything, so.
I just want to add that Helen has been a joy to work with, and thank you, Helen.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah, if I had a comment as well, thanks, Helen, because you have been on some meetings where you've participated and shared and, um, with some of the, I would call some of the, uh, the biggest brands, so to speak, in terms of commercial development in the state. And I think that's been an important element in your value as we try to build our brand in conjunction, because these are simultaneous movements in, in, in making our town of a, a, uh, in, in getting some of the things we need for our town. So again, thanks, Helen. Appreciate your conversations and your participation.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. If there's no further discussion on that, we'll look forward to her package and the process that she's going to use to help us, uh, internalize it and own it. And we'll move forward to item three, which is both for the community as well as yourself, so we can answer questions, uh, regarding the 2024 election and voting process. So, um, I'll turn this over to Alicia, who's going to talk to us about how this has to work. What, 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 whether there'll be a box in Hideout, et cetera, et cetera. How do you vote? All that kind of stuff.
So, um, sorry I didn't get this in the packet, but I'll put it in the final packet for the public. The ballots will be mailed out on October fifteenth. Um, if you are a registered voter in Hideout or Wasatch County or where, you know, if you're a registered voter that's current, um, you'll just automatically get that ballot, so you don't need to, um, apply for anything. We will have the ballot drop box open twenty-four seven, starting October sixteenth up here at Town Hall, and that'll go through, uh, November fifth at eight o'clock PM, which is Election Day at eight PM. So, um, if you do need to, um, vote in person for some reason, um, there are other locations within Wasatch County that you could drop your ballot off, like if you're down in Heber or something, you're, you know, you can drop it off at the Wasatch County Clerk's Office. Those locations are listed on the Wasatch County Clerk's, uh, website. Um, the last day to register to vote and have a ballot mailed to you would be October twenty-fifth by five o'clock PM. Um, so if you need to update your address or anything like that, please make sure you do that before then. Um, you can register online at vote dot utah dot gov, um, if you have a current Utah driver's license. Um, you can also check your voter registration, view a sample ballot, or find out any candidate information, um, if they've submitted. But it's a, it's a great resource to go to if you want candidate information. And that's not just for this year, it's for every single year. So, um, if you do, if you'd rather vote in person, they will have early voting at the Heber Senior, uh, sorry, Senior Citizen Center located in Heber, down at four sixty-five East, twelve hundred South, starting from October twenty-ninth through November first at nine AM through four o'clock PM. And then if you, again, if you have a problem with your ballot or anything like that, you really should contact the Wasatch County Clerk's Office. Um, but if you need to go in person, which I highly do not recommend, um, please allow for long wait times. It is a presidential election. Bring a camp chair, you will be waiting for a while. Um, but that will be on November fifth from seven AM to eight PM at the Senior Citizen Center in Heber as well. Um, again, I do encourage you to return your ballot by mail or in the ballot drop boxes. Um, just, you do have to go in person, go early, uh, so that you don't have to wait in line terribly long on Election Day. I've seen those lines like four hours sometimes, but that was in Salt Lake County. I'm sure that Wasatch County residents aren't like that. But do make sure to bring your ID and proof of residency if you didn't get a ballot in the mail, and you need to go in person. So are there any questions in council or public even?
Let me, let me make a couple of comments before we jump to the questions. Uh, one is the ballot box is sitting outside the Town Hall. That ballot box is in the view of the cameras, which are recording twenty-four seven. So, um, so we, uh, they are under, um, shh, what's the right word?
Surveillance.
Surveillance, thank you. That's the word I was looking for. So they are, they are under surveillance. So, uh, so you should feel some degree of confidence that if you put your ballot in the box, um, will, we, we, obviously, we don't know what, what you voted, but we, we can, uh, you know, we'll know if something were to happen, we would know, uh, who's, who, um, may, you know, on the time of, if something were to happen to the box, like somebody hits it, backs it into it with a car or something, we'll, we'll know about it. Um, the second thing is, um, there is in, there is a way to confirm that your ballot has been received by, uh, by the election team. So i- if you have concerns about, did my ballot actually get there because I put it in the mail? Alicia, I, I don't remember what, what you do, but there is a way to see that your ballot was received.
Yep, vote dot utah dot gov, uh, you can go in and sign up for track my ballot, and so get notifications on when your ballot was received, or you can go in and do it. Yourself. I do, can I make another quick point before I forget, Mayor?
Yep.
Thank you. Um, one of the most common issues with ballots being rejected is if the voter does not sign the back of their envelope. Please make sure that you are signing your envelope, um, and it, it does state that the contact information is optional. But if you do provide your contact information and there is a problem, you're going to get a more, a higher chance of them counting your ballot if you provide it than if you don't. So just, you know, I encourage everybody to sign it and put their, at least their email address down so that you can, they can contact you if there's an issue. Anything else, Mayor?
No, those are my thoughts to add on. Um, we, we will not have it in the, um, Town Hall ballot box. We'll be using the, uh, freestanding one that's outside the Town Hall, if any. So you can't, if you want to bring it in person, you have to bring it to Heber or one of the other locations. Uh, we are not unauthorized. Receive, um, receive a ballot in person, um, location.
So I do have a question. Um, so what are the rules about? Um, so it, you can put your own ballot in the ballot box that's outside the Hideout Town Council. Can I also put in a family member's ballot? Do I only have to drive there once? What's the, what are the, what's the state law about? Um, who? And ha- and how many ballots someone can, um, drop in that box?
That's a really good question. Thank you for, for bringing that up, Councilmember Bear. Um, fire, sorry. Um, you can actually, you can drop off as many ballots, you know, your, your spouses, partners, friends, whatever. But just keep in mind that you are responsible for that ballot once it's in your hands. So, you know, if something horrible happens, um, you know, in between your friend's house and your ballot box, and you lose that ballot, then that's on you. So we'll just leave it at that. Um, obviously, they have to sign their own ballot. We don't want to commit any sort of forgery or fraud. Um, there's better reasons to go to jail. So. Yeah, does that answer your question?
What's the big deal for Chicago? Of course you're supposed to bring ten ballots.
Well, I just want to be sure, you know, we, we want this election to be fair, and everyone to follow the, the state rules. We need to make sure we're following the rules of the state of Utah, so that, you know, it's a free and fair election and, um, and, you know, people, or many people's possible are voting.
Absolutely. I definitely would not recommend collecting a lot of ballots. I mean, you know, we don't mind however many. They're, they're going to clean out the ballot box every couple of days or so, especially in this election where it's a much larger turnout. Um, but, you know, it, again, you're responsible for those ballots. I don't encourage you go clear up and down your street and collect everybody's ballots and drop them off. You know, that's just, it doesn't look good.
No, 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 that's not what I'm thinking. I'm thinking if you take the ballot of somebody who, let's say, doesn't drive.
Yeah, that's absolutely fine. Yeah.
Okay.
The ones and twos, I would say you're absolutely fine to accept. Yeah. So as long as they can mark their own ballot, so.
Uh, right, right.
Yep.
I just, I, the reason I asked Alicia is I thought there had been a restriction. Um, I thought there had been one for the state of Utah. I don't know if it, if I'm remembering wrong.
Not that I'm aware of, um, unless it's passed within the last couple of years. I, I'm not aware of anything of that nature. So. We're actually, I'm actually updated on election laws every year, and I, I haven't heard of anything like that, so.
Oh, great. Thank you. I'm glad you were able to, um, help, help me understand that and help all of us, um, be, be better citizens and voters.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Nope, thanks.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Alicia. Uh, Alicia's pro in this space, so. Alicia's pro in this space, so if you get questions from constituents and you don't know how to answer, um, and, and, and they have truly gone to vote.utah.gov, um, then you're certainly welcome to reach out for, to Alicia for other ideas of where they can get the information. But make sure that your constituent is actually bothered to go to the webpage first. We get lots of questions that are, that the answers are sitting right there on the webpage, so. Okay. Item four, we have, uh, as I mentioned at the beginning, uh, we have withdrawn that from tonight's agenda due to, uh, input from our legal team. So that'll come up, uh, next month, hopefully. Um, when it's, when the legal issues are resolved. So now we'll move to number five. And this is back to Alicia. As I understand it, so I'll let you talk about it, Alicia, or is it Cameron? I don't know. Who's talking about this?
Um, I think Dan and I are going to tag team a little bit here. And Cameron can definitely weigh in. So, um, Ralph, I believe that this was brought up, um, kind of as a follow-up on some of your, your, um, it was, it was a follow-up on one of the minutes, several of the minutes. So I just want to kind of go through our short-term rental ordinances, business license procedures, things like that, just so that you are familiar with them, um, and you know that we're, we're monitoring as best as we can. The, uh, short-term rental definition means any dwelling or condominium or portion thereof that is available for use or is actually used for accommodations or lodging of guests for a period of less than thirty consecutive days. Wherein guests pay a fee or other compensation for said use, also known as a nightly rental. So obviously, if your family members come to stay with you and as long as you're not paying, they're not paying a fee to stay there, you're fine. Um, Hideout Municipal Code Regulations for Short-Term Rental, this is in four point oh seven point oh two. Short-term rentals require the following to obtain and possess a short-term rental license, contracting the services of a property management company that is licensed in accordance with the state and local ordinances and can respond on-site within thirty minutes. B, inspection and approval by the Wausatch County Health Department annually. And C, inspection and approval by the Wausatch County Fire Department annually. We want to make sure that everybody who is doing a short-term rental, uh, is safe. They, if they have a hot tub, there's, um, you know, tests that the health department does, um, to make sure that the, the pH balance is right in the pool and nobody's going to get flaring burns or, you know, they're not gross. Things such as that, um, make sure there's egress, um, windows and things that are not blocking, like beds or, you know, whatever. Um, a business license is required. Uh, it shall be a class B misdemeanor for any person to transact, engage or carry on in any business, trade, because that, uh, sorry, profession, calling to operate a vending mobile or porn-operated machine without first receiving the class or type of license required by the municipality. So I, I, um, I do all the business licenses. Um, I'm, I'm working with the fire department, I'm working with Wausatch County Health Department to make sure that I get those permits that are signed off before I even issue a business license to a short-term rental. Person. Um, that person has to register their business with the state prior to obtaining a license with Hideout. That's just how it works. So there's, it's kind of a, a whole process. And then we just once, once they get those permits, then I can issue the business license. Do you have any questions so far, Ralph, on that?
Well, I, well, I think it's going to be, go ahead, Phil. Sorry, um, so one of the things, um, I would ask is, and that's for you and Cameron to work on, I guess, is do we have any penalties for, for people who are operating a nightly rental without registering?
Um, I don't think we do as of yet. Um, Cameron, can you weigh in on the state?
Yeah, so, so the, the default fine that we have, sort of the general fine for violation of a, a hideout ordinance is going to be the fine that would apply to operating a short-term rental without a license. I'm sorry, I have too many fee schedules, uh, on my brain from this week. And so I don't know what that amount is, but it's whatever that default amount is. If there are um, specific fines that the council and the mayor want to allocate for short-term rental violations, we can have a specific fee for that.
I was just thinking if we made it, um, meaty enough that, uh, it would encourage people to, you know, if it's, if it's fifty bucks, there's not a lot of reason to, to, to follow the process. If it's five hundred or two thousand, then there may be more incentive to bother to get the permit. If, if it's cheaper to, that's all I'm thinking.
I believe that our basic citation is five hundred. Is that what you recall, Cameron?
Well, I, I'm not asking for the answer right here. I'm just asking for you to look at it and, and consider making it enough that, uh, it's, it, it acts as a, uh, a dissuader for those who might be thinking about trying to go off the books.
I would suggest that we consider something like a number or fifty percent of the rent, whichever is greater. As, as, you know, a form, we'd have to formalize and codify that. But I think it needs to be something along that nature because if it's an eight thousand dollar rental, um, five hundred bucks may not be enough.
Exactly.
Yeah, we are, we are limited under state law, uh, to a maximum fine of whatever a class B misdemeanor is under the state, uh, bail schedule. I think that's currently a thousand dollars, but I would have to double check if that's changed this year.
Per violation? In other words, could it be per nightly rental? In other words, for each night, a thousand dollars or?
Correct. Yeah, per, per day.
Per day, I think now we've got some incentive.
Yeah.
And, and Cameron, do you know what Park City's ordinance, um, is by any chance?
I don't offhand. I'm sorry.
Yeah, maybe it'd be good to understand what, you know, one or two surrounding communities might be, you know, using as the stick, so to speak, in this case, um, to prevent that. My, my biggest concern is, what big A, A concern, um, you know, there's multiples in, in any of this, is those folks under, uh, operating under the radar, um, you know, outside of even what the CPA or the HOA restricts. And I think those are areas that we just, you know, they're hard, harder, a little bit harder to figure out. Um, and I just don't know what other communities, we've talked about this, use for tracking mechanisms, you know, for those illegals, so to speak, that shouldn't be operating at all in areas that restrict, um, you know, not the rentals period, yet are collecting some money. And that money, if they go through, if they're part of, from what I understand, if you, if you're operating under the radar in, in a non-short-term rental area, but you're going, you're, uh, but you're using an agency to collect, that agency still requires you to have, have a business license and report the taxable revenue to the state. So do we have any tracking mechanisms around those kinds of things?
Yeah. That's a good question, and we do have, um, options. Polly and I have actually dealt with this quite a bit, uh, with some of the resort towns that we represent. And so there are several software companies um, that will actually search through, um, short-term rental advertising websites uh, to identify short-term rental properties by the address. And so then we can reference that against the business licenses that we have. Um, we also have worked on enforcement from, um, reviews that are left on various websites. And so it's, it's, it's pretty hard to operate a short-term rental when you're trying to advertise to generate business um, and do it completely under the radar because you're trying to put that out publicly. And so there are ways that we can look to find that. Um, and then most, if not all, or at least the large, uh, vacation rental, uh, websites, if the, if a business license is required, um, and we notify that, uh, short-term rental, uh, company, they will require the person to list their business license on the, um, advertisement. Um, under Utah law, we can't, we can't find somebody in violation simply for advertising for a short-term rental. Uh, the state legislature passed a specific code exempting the advertising as a, as a free speech issue. Um, but the companies will require a business license if, if the municipality requires it, and then there's other ways that we can follow up on.
Yeah, I mean, one, one, one mechanism could simply be where we're getting more money than we expect based upon the number of outstanding legal short-term rentals. So, um, you know, I don't know if there's, I don't know the company that you're talking about in terms of the software, but there's AI, um, models out today, today that really zone in on to fraud. So anyway, food for thought is.
I think it's a great, great thought, Ralph. The other thought I would have is, you know, we, we've, as we've been learning, we've been requiring, you know, um, so for example, with the Deer Springs stuff that we recently passed, um, we said that we're basically saying that everybody who's listing has to list with one of two agencies. Um, I don't know, Cameron, if we can go and, and spread that across the other places that have nightly rentals in, in Hideout, for example, Claim. Um, if we can ask them to do the same thing, uh, as opposed to having, you know, each individual resident doing their own thing. I, I don't know if we can pass language that would allow us to require them to, to, you know, list with one of, you know, two companies or, uh, or, you know, and, and put everything through those companies as opposed to having to chase, uh, instead of eighty-eight units in Claim, we'd only have to chase two people, two companies.
Yeah, I, I, my, I would have to look at the, the legal research on that. My, my first guess is that for the government to restrict that is probably going to be an unreasonable infringement on people's business um, rights, but because of, you know, an HOA or a contract can do things that the government can't necessarily do. And so I'd have to look at that, but it certainly is something that we can, we can investigate.
Because we have, we have one piece of Deer Springs that was previously approved that's independent of the, what the rest of it's going to be. I'd love to pull them into the same package and, and, and we could sit, certainly sit down with the Claim HOA and, and request that they do the same. If.
Speak to this issue, please?
Sure.
Okay, so just to refresh your recollection, I met with Park City Manager and Planning Department about this issue. And, um, just so you know, the receipts from nightly rentals to the town, uh, in the month of July were thirty-two dollars and twenty-three cents. Okay, um, this is not, I, I think we're wise to address it now. But, um, you know, we can look to our neighbors, Park City, who do this in volume and have experienced all kinds of things. Uh, and Park City said it was not worth hiring uh, another agency. Park City is hiring for local enforcement. And I think we can, we can rely on the experience of our Park City neighbors. And, um, you know, the law is, is changing rapidly in this area, but I think we, while we're wise to be aware of it, we don't need to make it a huge issue when it's only thirty dollars a month.
Jan, was that thirty-two dollars? Who, who was that for? Was that for us or, or Park City?
That's the amount of nightly rentals we have. Okay, we get thirty-two last, so the tax commission is three months behind, right? We're just getting data for July, but it's, it's such a small issue at this point. I think we're right to be all over the issue and get regulations in, in, in force, but let's not spend a whole lot of time on this. We have so many issues that we can, we can spend our resources on elsewhere. So, um, you know, let's just lean on our friends and stay up to date. And that's my two cents. Thanks.
You know, if you, if anybody who's ever searched Airbnb or any of these sites, at any given time, there are dozens of sites that are being offered within the town of Hideout. And I don't know how often they're being rented, but they're certainly being offered in, in fairly large numbers. And so I have to wonder, is the reason we're only receiving thirty-four dollars because we have an enforcement problem? Or is it really because they're so rarely actually rented? And I don't know the answer. Um, but I know the question. Because at any, search at any time, you get on your phone right now and search.
I'm not arguing with you at all, Jonathan. I agree completely. I think what we ought to do is a couple of models saying what our income, and we've done these, you know, in the discussions. So, you know, what would our income be if, if fifty percent of, of the things that are allowed were rented fifty percent of the time? And what's the generate, what's the revenue in, you know, pick a, pick a, a rental number, I don't care. You know, we can get a sense of these things going eight hundred bucks a night or whatever. And just say, but what would our income, projected income be? And we've done those models. I know Rob Sands worked on those and some of that stuff. Just so we have an understanding of, you know, is the, how much of, of the view is worth the climb? I mean, if, if, if we met all those numbers and we were going to get three thousand dollars a year, that's nice to have, but it doesn't necessarily justify five thousand dollars in software.
I would agree. Exactly. I think we just need to know the number.
Yeah, I think that's right.
So we've done that work. We just need to dust it off and, and, and review it. So Jan, if you can work with Rob and get that out, um, that'd be great. Anything else?
I was going to say, thanks for the follow-up here, uh, from my end. I think, um, the other big question which we don't need to get into tonight is, uh, you know, for, for us as potentially new areas in town where we would approve, we want to segment nightly rentals, I think that's part of our, our goal long-term, but, but allow them, um, is certainly understand, you know, what's the give and the take based upon the developer. Because as I know, in, in multiple conversations with Thomas, and I know he's still on, that, you know, and everything I know about, um, that, uh, the value to the developer for selling homes can go up as much as, you know, a hundred thousand dollars on a, on a million and a half dollar home or, you know, anywhere from five to ten percent, uh, for the value for adding short-term or nightly rentals for that particular piece of property. So, um, I think we certainly need to know in part of our strategy, um, what kinds of gets we get by giving up some of this as well. Uh, because we, yeah, anyway, that's probably a topic for another discussion, but an important one. And, and the other thing that I was, uh, we don't have anything, um, written on fractional ownership. Uh, I don't think, um, Phil, do you know?
No, I don't, I don't think we've addressed fractional ownership at all, Ralph.
I don't think we have either. Yeah. So anyway, those two topics might be more of a, you know, discussion topic at another point.
Great idea. I love that idea.
Just, just a real quick FYI, the state legislature did pass a statute in 2023 restricting, uh, the manner that municipalities can restrict fractional ownership. So I'm happy to put together kind of a summary on that, but we have some limited options, uh, for that.
That would be great. I know Park City did something, but, uh, I'm not sure if they went beyond the scope of what the state allowed or not, and they were pulled back on that. So, yeah, that would be, that would be a good, you know, opinion that you could put together for us, I think, Cameron. Thanks, everyone.
Okay. Item six, um, the upgrade on the agreement with, uh, concerning the fifty thousand contribution and the water shares donation. That document is out for signature. Uh, we anticipate having it signed by, uh, has to get signed by Nate, it has to get signed by JSSD, then it has to get signed by us. So it's in, it's in the Nate side of things right now. Uh, Alicia is tracking it, but I imagine that in the next one to two weeks, we'll have it signed by everybody and the, and the funds exchanged and the, and the water shares, uh, in our name. If there's no questions on that, I'll go to number seven. Um, so Dan's, uh, Dan's got some guys trained on the, uh, on the new code enforcement software. They have begun using it. Uh, it's early days, but they're using it and, uh, my recommendation is that Dan present next month. The results through a report from the software of, you know, what we're seeing and, uh, you know, how it's tracking. So we're just getting, just getting it up and running, but, um, but. We should be able to pull a report. I mean, the system has it. So I've asked Dan, already asked Dan to be prepared to share that next month. To, to, to be able to see what it's telling us.
And I'm happy to answer any quick questions right now if anybody has anything.
Okay. I don't see any or hear anything. So it's moving and we're glad to have it and, uh. You know, the guys are getting, getting better with it and how to use it. So, uh, hopefully we'll have. Uh, the vast majority of our infractions recorded, um. In the, in the tool for next month.
And by the way, Alicia, may, maybe I will make a comment. Thank you for five, six and seven, because they were follow ups out of. I think, um, you know, previous meetings in the minutes. So really nice job on that. Appreciate it.
So. Item eight seems to be related to item nine, so let me, let me flip it around. And, uh, the chief is here and wants to talk as well, but let me just kind of tee it up. We have been. As, as the town knows, and we received several parcels of land from, uh. From the Deer Springs develop, developers in, as part of their, uh, their approval for their development. The vast majority of those parcels are at the State Park entrance and we've got a whole team working on. How do we, uh, develop that State Park entrance as a commercial space? Supporting, you know, outdoor activities, et cetera, uh, for, uh, for the town. Um, the other parcel we have is on the uphill side of two forty eight, the east side. Um, and it sits between the Wolf Property and, um, Deer Mountain. And we have been intending to provide, um. Space on that property for the permanent fire station. Um, in order to do that, the council has to approve, uh, that use. Um, and there have been some questions about, is that the best location and the best space to do that work? Uh, to, I, I put the fire station in, um, and, and while I'm strongly in favor of it. Uh, we, we do have to have the discussion. So that's the intent of, um, of these, these, these two topics, this one topic really. Which is the permanent fire station, um, and, and the council agreeing that we can use that space. Or portion of that space, because they don't need it all for the permanent, uh, fire station. So, um. Chief, I guess. Sorry, Alicia, you sent me some stuff that I, I couldn't share, right? I think.
Um, you should be able to share.
Okay, I'm just trying to, I didn't, I got too close to the meeting and I didn't grab the email in time, so.
Oh, sorry.
That's not your fault. It's just me. I'm getting it open now.
Okay.
So, um. So I'm gonna let the chief talk a bit about some charts I'm about to share with you. Um, and then, uh, and then we can have a discussion. So.
Thank you, Mayor.
Give me, give me one second, chief. Let me, so I get it up here. So everybody can see it. So.
Well, just for the folks in the room, my name's Eric Hales. I'm the fire chief of the Los Angeles Fire District, and I appreciate the opportunity to come speak here tonight. Um, we, I brought with me Eber Slavert with, uh, AJC, our architect. To kind of talk about and discuss the possibility of what the fire station would be. But as we, uh, look at this, I think we're in the PDF version of it and I have it in the PowerPoint as well, but. Just to talk about the permanent location, as you are probably well aware that. Uh, over the last few years, I've been working with the mayor and, and some members of the council of how do we provide service over here? As for years, decades, almost, we've been having to respond to this area from the Jordanale. And even though it's nice to stone throw across the lake, it's very difficult to get around here.
Yeah.
I believe we were all hoping when the Jordanale Parkway came in, that was going to be a lifeline for us and shorten that distance. But with as beautiful as that road is, as windy as it is, it's still almost quicker to come around the highway.
Hmm.
To get to the site. So with that. We kind of need to understand, you know, a, a few things. And I'm sure you're well aware, when you talk about. To your insurance agents and different things, they want you within five miles, your fire station. And even with the Jordanale Parkway, if you go to the next slide, Mayor, or the next page. Even with the Jordanale Parkway, following it around, five miles basically gets us to the corner of Shoreline and Overlook. Loop. And there's not many homes, yes, of a few homes, homes and down the Set Drive. Uh, have just recently been built and before that, that's, we don't even get into the community.
Yeah.
Before that. So as I mentioned, we have been working with the mayor the last several years and. Members of the council, what can we do over here? Um, obviously, building a fire station. You know, we need, we need land and also we need funding for it. And how are we going to do that? They're very expensive, especially in, um, the, with the building costs down. So what we came up with is, you know, last year, whether. You're aware that we passed the EMS sales tax, which is really going to help us generate the revenue we need. It allows us to capture those who are visiting, you know, the sales tax. You know, we all pay sales tax, but primarily we've noticed that almost fifty percent of the calls, our callouts. Are from out of town residents. They weren't participating in that. Um, our funding mechanism primarily had been off property tax.
Yeah.
So our only option would have been to raise property tax. That is the last thing we wanted to do. The last thing you wanted us to do. So we tried to find this other mechanism to kind of help them help us share that burden. And thankfully that was passed last and we started collecting those, those funds. And projecting those funds, those are going to be able to help us build facilities and expand our scope. With knowing we're getting that, we started working with the town. And how can we get here a little quicker? That's when, you know, right or wrong, we, we were able to use a parcel from a developer and put it on a temporary station. And since August first, we've been able to have people over here twenty four hours a day. So we appreciate your support of that. We know it's not the prettiest building, but we have a resolve for that. That's what my friend here is going to talk about. When you talk about the parcel, you know, we can talk about the need and I don't think we need to belabor this. We know like having some, uh, a, a facility over here will do. Decrease response times, both on the fire side, but also on that access to emergency medical care.
Yeah.
That's going to happen. We know that to your, uh. Insurance companies, having a fire station within five miles of your residence. It's gonna, in that proximity, it's going to help improve the ISO ratings and be able to utilize those benefits. And then also hopefully mainly to lowering the pre, insurance premiums. And one of the biggest things is that level of collaboration and cooperation that we're. Um, having this coordination between the town and the fire district to actually bring that here. And that's what tonight's about. Is that collaboration. We are so grateful. And that councilman Gunn was able to, uh, tie us in with the developer that was willing. To share a piece of his property, but there's strings attached because he's continuing to develop. And as he moves up that hill and gets closer and closer, his eyes, those last two lots that I'm occupying, saying, hey. I don't want those back. And we're more than happy to give them back. Kind of leave no trace mentality and move, but we want somewhere to go.
Yeah.
So we've been working with the, uh, the town and identifying areas and they had a couple of parcels. As Mayor, if you go to the next. Slide, actually the one after that, please. So what we did is we identified, and we worked with our, the county GAS folks. Where would be the best location in the community to get the best bang for our buck? And it just so happened, the, uh, parcel that the mayor described is almost dead center. Not only of hideout, but of this corridor. And it is on a limited access highway. It's not like we can put a Maverick there and have multiple in egresses and ingresses. You know, so there's not a lot that you probably could put on it, but there is value there. Um, and we appreciate the town even considering us using that. But I remember a couple of years ago, riding around in the mayor's truck, look, identifying sites, where could we go? And we kept, we pulled up here and I'm like, you know, like the pioneers in the past, this was the place. And from there. We have the GAS folks look at it and basically what this rendition here is from that location is a five road miles. It's not as the crow flies, because that, that would be much easier, but five road miles. Having them work through that and the coverage that one location provides is amazing. So it can cover the entire town and the, uh, two forty eight corridor.
Yeah.
So with that, so as a fireman, I'm not an architect, so you see what I can provide. A circus tent and a trailer. But we have experts and we have, um, Eber here who will kind of explain. What we want to try to do and program that area. That parcel is about three and a half acres or so, or just over. And we're looking at encumbering no more than three quarters of the night. At the most, but this, he is the expert, so I'm going to turn some time over to him, if that's okay.
Great.
So we've been, and there's some, um, exhibits on that, that presentation as well, where we brought some in the inside as well, Mayor.
It's a good looking fire station. So there's different kinds of fire stations, um, large stations and satellite stations. This would be a satellite station where. We're the ones doing the one downtown in Heber, the new large central fire station. And that's a large fire station. This would be a two bay. Right here and it, it holds between a five to six person crew. So basically crew quarters right here and all the amenities they need. And the two deep bays for the ability to get brush trucks or, uh, multiple axle apparatus. Or even a ladder truck if that came down the road. It's, you've got to plan it. It's hard to add on. Nobody ever adds on to a fire station. We've done thirteen of these in the last few years and zero add-ons. So you don't add on, it just ends up getting rebuilt. So. What we're trying to find is a way to get it as compact as possible. To fit onto the triangle of the site that's out there here, familiar with it. So we're tucking ourselves. Right into the tiniest little triangle. That's why the building gets real skinny right here. And deep here, and then we're basically going to bury it into the hill. So we take up as little property as possible. This is what you would see from the main road. Uh, a concept potentially for station fifty six, the materiality from hideout. Uh, you know, the wood, the stone and the, the architecture of the place. So it feels like it fits in. Every fire station should feel like a representation of the community it goes into. It's a, it's a community asset. It's a civic building. And basically, the ideal scenario is to have a pull through station so they can come in the back and come out the front, but. The site, as you know, goes like this.
Yeah.
So we'll, they'll be backing into this building and, and the hill just goes up right behind. So there is ability for the public, you know, if you have an emergency, you need to go there. There is a place for the public to come pull up and the entrance is right off the front there. Um, right here at that entry breezeway. And there's a covered patio out there out front for the firefighters, uh, to be on, uh, some for part of the day. So. The idea is to get this as compact and use as little site as possible. Usually the tallest part of the building in this example. It was kind of where, how it fits on the site, um, of the triangle. And I can show you. So what we're trying to accomplish. Here's the teeny tiny corner right here. And, um. Worst case scenario is point seven five acres, which is out here, but that's because we're stepping. You know, doing little spreading walls to step it up because it's less costly. But we can cut down to almost a half an acre. If the building becomes the, the retaining wall for the project and just bury the building into the slope.
Yeah.
It costs more, but it uses less slope, but it's, this is about as compact as, as site as we can get for a, a small fire station. So it's, it would range anywhere from point five to point seven five acres in what it would use up. And, uh, yeah, usually this is the tallest part of the station, but because of the slope, it'll kind of just get buried in. Happy to answer any questions about the station, the functionality, the use of it.
Of course, there's a cost.
Yeah, so modern stations, uh, run anywhere from. About five hundred and thirty dollars a square foot to six hundred and twenty dollars a square foot. So. Uh, a station like this, that's about eight thousand square feet, um. At about.
Forty five million.
Yeah, not forty five million.
Four, two, five.
Four to five million, yes, forty five million dollars.
How, how does the tax thing that we passed, how does that schedule out in terms of paying for that?
Well, with, so our revenue stream is obviously property tax, impact fees. That you've seen and also, um, this sales tax and. We are about, our, our goal is we're not going to bond for this. We're just going to pay half for this. And so we have basically. Basically, by the end of this year and.
Funds are allocated to this.
Yeah. Yes, yeah. So we've already began the process of. You know, once we get the approval, we can pull the trigger on starting the design sets. We can go out to bid.
Got it.
And, and we basically have identified a ten year. Uh, plan of stations over the next ten years in Los Angeles County. I need to build not only the one heap we're doing now, the main. We need to do four additional.
Yeah.
And this is, I would like to start this by the next fall, but you know, that's.
How long does it take to complete?
Testament. Yeah. So because this is a small station, you can probably build this in about twelve months. The, the steepness that. This sort of makes it complicated to build.
Fair enough.
Because we're ranging between twenty to thirty percent grade, which is very steep.
Yeah.
So we're probably leaning more towards fourteen months. Chief and I are flying out next Friday to go look at some alternatives that could rapidly speed that up with prefabrication. Um, but, uh, you know, it's, it's typically between twelve to fourteen months.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
We're doing everything we can to make this, this cost efficient and try to meet the needs, especially in these. These areas that have been understood for years and we identify that.
So we're looking at twenty twenty six.
But in the meantime.
We had the.
We got there ten, ten, three years, yeah. Yeah. So, well, I think the way he's moving is probably two. So we are.
Yeah.
We're not.
The way he's selling, more at four. So it's, it's, the, the trick is, uh, the site's the most complicated part and design wise, it takes about six to eight months to complete the design. For a station and then you assume another twelve to fourteen months for this location. That's why the urgency is to start. If you're trying to hit a certain date.
But between those two, you have to go to bid, right?
Yeah, and bidding takes, um. There's crews that do these stations quite often. So the bidding would take, you should probably end in about three to four weeks. And then about four to six weeks for permitting. So, you know, I'd say two months on top of that.
Once you guys know somebody about.
Yeah, if you know someone who does permitting, we'd be taking. I, it's a question maybe we work for each other. What, so what is the story with the land? Is that secured or does the town, what, what does the town? So town, that's free and clear to the town right now?
So Thomas, correct me if I'm wrong, um, the town currently owns the land.
Okay.
So the town controls what, what goes there and what doesn't go there to a great degree. And right now the issue is up before the council. Should we authorize the mayor to proceed or not? But the town owns land, correct?
Yes, a hundred percent.
Cool. So, so the question, for fairness purposes, as I understand this is. There, there could be some demand for commercial versus having a fire station. Is that, that's the essence of this?
Some, you, there could be some future demand.
Yeah.
Unknown at this.
I, I would, I would rephrase that in saying that.
I, I would, I would rephrase that in saying that, um, you know, it is town land. Um, and we have to decide how best to use it. And you know, with any piece of dirt, you can do a lot of things with it. We can put houses on it and you can, you know, whatever. But um, I think the greatest value for this community is the bene, and the benefits from this fire station uh, more than outweigh any uh, likely commercial use for this space or, or, or residential use.
I think everybody in this room would agree with that. Yes.
Um, so, but you know, again, it's a public process. The land is public land.
Got it.
We own it. Uh, we don't have to have a public hearing because we own it outright. It's not about buying or selling land. It's about how we use it. Um, and so we're doing that tonight, having the discussion about how best to use this. Um, yeah, the, just back up for half a second because I've talked to my insurance guy, uh, and he brought up a really good point. Um, if you've lived here long enough, you've probably already been canceled by your insurance company at least once.
Yeah.
Because we live in the wildland urban interface. Um, what my insurance guy told me is that by having this station within the five mile limit, it may, even if it doesn't lower our rates, it has a greater chance of them not canceling us. Because it's close. So.
I was told the exact same thing. So I, so I can, you know, diddle that comment, like you're right.
So it's, so that's another, you know, having been through, I'm on my third company in seven years. Fourth co, fourth company in seven years. So uh, I would love not to have to keep hunting people who want to um, insure me. Um, and so that's another high value for us having a station here. Anyway, um, so that's.
Yeah, if I could, that Phil, um, um, you know, we just, uh, so wait, the H O A here in Russler um, got canceled. Uh, we were paying about forty thousand. Um, we had to shop our, our coverage. And now, and, and the, and the uh, the only quote we got was two twenty. So call it five point, you know, five X. Um, so it's pretty important that, yeah, I, you know, I'm all for this. We, we absolutely have to have something. Because uh, whether you're a single family property owner or you're a part of an H O A, you're going to get hit. And um, and even with this, the underwriters um, that took on our new quote, um, they didn't really give us any credit for, uh, they didn't give any credit. There's debits and credits when you do underwriting. They didn't give us any credit, but they didn't give us any debits either. So we stayed kind of neutral and the five, the five point five X was due to be us being, all of us being in a wildfire potential zone here. So whether you're a single family owner, we may be one of the first hit on this. So we have to do something. And, and you know, if we could accelerate this, that it would even be better. Um, and we have to show underwriters that we can um, respond to a fire uh, much more quickly because we are out of the five mile zone, although right now not even our H O A is getting credit on the underwriting side. So I, I, by the way, I plan on doing an analysis of this so that we have a be, better view for the town. Because um, you know, all the components of our town, all the HOAs, all the single prop, single family property owners could now be subject to substantial multiples of um, fire insurance. And you know what's going on in California exits of, uh, exits of property insurance companies and, and and um, the fact that it, a, a lot of people are going uninsured. You can't do that if you're obviously an H O A. But um, the enormity of the increase is upon us. So.
Yeah, you're right, Ralph.
We got, we got a great, we got a great situation here if we can move on it. And that's where I'm at. Yeah.
Well, I, I think it would be remiss unless not, you know, just pure public safety. What is it? Fifteen minutes from, from, just to get from the current Jordanale, like to damaged shoreline, it would take fifteen, twenty minutes, right?
It took twenty minutes um, a year and a half ago when our neighbor's called.
Yeah.
And not only that, the ne, the neighbor, it was a life and death situation. They were having CPR. She had to run up the hill because nobody knew where to get to her, her house. So.
Oh, it's a long time.
That was um, that's Steve's.
Steve and Andrea, right?
Yeah. It took twenty minutes.
So we got a real life example that's like laying it out. I mean, I, I think it's very obvious, but you know, I don't know. Yeah.
Okay, so we have, we have a station that is a qualified station today. So Ralph, I don't know if you've shared that with you, because I know you were going out for, for your insurance before the station was up and running. I don't know if that will help your H O A do better versus not having.
And, and they're not taking, so I know the company quite well. It's a international, one of the top five insurance companies in the world that are taking us on at the five point five X increase. Um, and, and in fact, I just met with some of their execs on another subject. But I'm going to see if I can't try to understand what are the current underwriting standards? And by the way, Chief Hells, I would love to participate with you because I may go and see if our state insurance commissioner, who's responsible for rate structuring in Utah, can help us um, you know, not only hideout, but in general. What, what is he doing to reduce, you know, to maintain rates at a, at a steadier state and entice yeah, and entice um, companies to come into the state? It really is a state regulated um, i- insurance metric. So yeah, I, I'm, I'm really thinking that we need to have a bigger voice with helping the state insurance commissioner, by the way, who comes from the help side. So he was a CFO at, at Inner Mountain. I'm not going to belabor this, but um, he doesn't have a lot of property insurance background and that's what we're going to get killed by right now. So anyway, um, Chief Hells, you know, the last time we talked was um, at the fire, at the um, outdoor uh, you know, firehouse fundraiser. You met my, my wife and the only thing I got to say is um, I'm going to hold you to that promise about having, you know, um, kind of a public event for the kids. Um, I know my grandson would love to jump on one of those fire trucks when we get this all, all laid out, you know, so.
Okay, if I can pull us back um, to uh, the.
Reality.
The topics here instead of uh, the, um, the party that we're going to celebrate with. Um, so the way, the way is I understand it from uh, from help from our legal folks is uh, that we uh, uh, resolve to authorize the mayor to negotiate terms um, for a, a long-term lease for the fire station on town property.
Mayor, do you want to open public comment to the people on, that are remote, just to see if they have anything to add or subtract?
Well, I was going to mention that there's a ton of, so this is what links, links us to number eight. So I couldn't figure out, we, we should do this after. There is a lot of, a lot of input if I can get it to open. No, where is it? Uh, sorry, I gotta stop sharing to get it.
I mean, Mayor, can you guys hear me? I'm not sure if my audio is working.
You're working.
Okay, good. I can tell you this, I haven't heard any. I've heard literally zero um, pushback against using the triangle parcel for this purpose. So I, I don't think we need to, I mean, has anyone heard, anybody complain? Or say, why would you use that for that when you can use it for something else? We've had, in my experience, a hundred percent backing. So I don't know how in-depth we need to go into the um, input we've received because it's been unanimous from my, from, from my perspective. So and then we also saw that map, which I thought was an excellent graphic. That map is, that map says everything. We have a station location that reaches the entire corridor within five miles. So, and we know our own town. You've driven around. Sounds like Mayor, you, you and the chief have, you know, gone and looked at everything.
We have.
We don't, we don't have a better location. So this is our best, this is our best offer, best, best uh, available location and it can, and it's, and it's viable uh, as shown through the diagrams that we've gotten, the, the, the concept drawings. We have enough space. Um, so I don't know why we wouldn't proceed with this at this point.
I'm not suggesting we wouldn't, um, Chris. Um, all I wanted to do for the record is point that there are a number of uh, receipts in messages that we receive from the community, um, which is this item eight here. Sorry, I've, I gotta put the share back on, but um, which, which confirmed just what you said. But I just wanted to get that in the record that we have lots of, lots of feedback from the community that they would like to, like to see us proceed with turning this into a permanent uh, fire station. So that's all I was trying to do here, Chris. I'm sorry.
Okay, great, great. Thanks. I am. I, I know we're, we're doing our diligence here, right? To make sure that we're good custodians of the property that we ha, that we have or that the town has ownership and control of. But um, you know, I, I think, I think we're ready to move forward. And it sounds like, you know, we're all interested in having this.
Yep.
Get going as quickly as possible and get that permanent station, you know, get, position it so it can be built. And then hopefully as quickly as possible.
So I'll, I'll make the motion then. I, I move that we authorize the mayor to enter into a long-term lease agreement with the fire department for the purposes of locating a permanent fire station on something between point seven five and one acre worth of the triangle property.
No, we don't, I don't, do we, do we need to be that prescriptive about this, how much of the property? I think we just need to authorize the mayor to n, negotiate the terms of a long-term lease for a fire station on town property. I mean, is there any reason why you would put that sp, specificity in there? As far as acreage?
I, I, I don't think we needed, Chris, but um, you know, if they come back with something grossly different, we would probably come back and say, because we're thinking that, you know, there's more space there that we might use to um, for example, clear, clear the town, uh, town property at Ross Creek for development.
Right, sure, sure. We, we, we talked about po, possibly, but you know, I would ask, and I didn't get a chance to answer this, ask this question earlier, but you know, why only two bays? Why not three bays? What's the reasoning for the size of this? You know, smaller station. It, 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 and, and since the architect mentioned, you know, they've never added on in the past, it sounds like they're building, they're building them to the correct size to begin with. But is this truly the correct size for all of our anticipated growth in the area and um, you know, is, i- if they wanted to make three bays, you know, for a good reason, wouldn't we let link them to a larger piece of property? So you, you know, that's the, the kind of the question.
But yeah.
I still have.
Um, with, with the size of the station is just, just the volume and, and how, how much we need here. I don't think out of the station, we're going to need, we have an aerial truck and that's going to be coming out of Jordanale. That is where our major commercial is, will be that new resort base. And we're going to keep the truck company in the aerial. You know, that's a four bay station over there, you know, just having, you know, a pumper with up to, um, we can have up to six people in this station. I think that's adequate. You know, we don't have a lot of calls over here. This is a very safe community for the most part. And it's just what, you know, what we're trying to accomplish is just be physically responsible with, with this station and provide the coverage that, that we need. Um.
Taking into account projected growth in, in the entire area.
Yeah, because what will be the the final of the population of this? Well, there's going to be.
Well, we know it's going to grow here. Um, and one question I had along with Chris and I, I would, I would agree, what?
Besides, by the other, there's only that five mile range. There's no others. Yeah, that's it. Thomas, our maximum growth is somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty five or twenty seven hundred units. Is that correct?
That is roughly correct, yeah.
Yeah, but, but this station encompasses more than hideout. It's the entire corridor. I mean, look at all of the growth going on in Two Hay. And I don't know, you know, that's part of the, the area. Though we're not, we don't, we can't just be looking just at hideout, even though we're the ones, you know, trying to make this happen with this piece of property and with a relationship with um, with the district. But I mean, we've got to look at growth everywhere that, that this fire station would, would be designed to serve.
I agree with Chris. I think, you know, if you look at Black Rock, you have higher buildings. And so one question I have here is, and right now, I, and, and this is just a, you know, maybe a technical question, Chief Hells. Um, do we have, uh, uh, you know, so we're, we're, we're potentially looking at giving variances on heights. So um, for instance, the, the showing property wants to have, you know, some higher, so you know, so higher building. Even in Ross Creek, if we've got developers in there, we might exceed our standard. Have you looked at um, you know, the ability for whatever trucks we get into our area to surf, uh, you know, serve the needs of maybe some additional heights? I don't know. I mean, I'm not sure how you work those equations, but you know, I'd say understanding and, and again, I'd lean into what Chris is saying. If we had a third bay for a larger truck at some point in the future, maybe that's the way to go.
So, so sorry, thanks Ralph. Um, so either Chris needs to result, re, um, recall her uh, statement about a res, or Jonathan, whoever made the resolution to, to move it forward.
It was Jonathan.
We were waiting for a second. Instead, we went off on this conversation. So I, I got to bring it back to that. Um, so if we want to have this conversation, that's fine, but we'll have to start the, the request uh, for approval again, okay?
Mayor, do you want me to make the motion again?
Well, I want, if this conversation is not over, I don't want you to make the motion.
Yeah, and I don't feel it's over. I'd like to, I'd just like to hear Chief Hells weigh in. So we have a better idea, at least at a high, you know, at a high level, what, you know, do we, do we need a larger um, firehouse to accommodate potentially higher heights going forward? Or is everything that we have encompassed in the two bay?
We, we can put a lar, our largest aerial apparatus is a hundred and seven feet and we probably won't ever get any larger than that, even though we're having much higher buildings. You can only use it so much. And then as you get a larger high-rise structure, you start building those fire safety features into the building, pressurized stairwells and things like that, stamp pipe systems and air replenishment systems. So we kind of build that into the design of the structure because we can only go so high on, with an aerial apparatus. These apparatus base will accommodate a full larger aerial apparatus. So that, you know, looking at adding an additional bay, we can look at redesign. This again was a concept that we were trying to ma, maximize that portion, also trying to be mindful that there's other, if, if we want to put, say, public works on the other portion of this. We can say, you know, give them, or they can utilize the other two acres of this parcel, just trying to, to find that balance. But I, I'm confident that we can provide the, the coverage we need um, for this, this, this town over here, especially with, with that. If we continue to grow, we may someday need to add an additional station. But I will tell you right now, what he designed and what we're building right now in Heber City is a first man fire station in a town of twenty five thousand people. They do not have a manned or staffed fire station.
What?
Well. Heber and either. It was all based on volunteer response. They never built the facilities. The first station that you could ever in Wasatch County was actually this station that you could stay twenty-four hours a day across the way. That was the first manned fire house in the county. The second one was built in Midway City, right across from Town Square. Again, you know, fairly small, but it accommodates, you know, and that's a town, you know, nine thousand people very well. So I, I totally appreciate, yes, I would love to have five days and fifteen people coming out of here, but.
The question, if you quadruple the number of calls that we have today, would this fire station still meet it?
Yes.
Yeah, and to clarify my comment about adding on, we designed for these locations, we.
we designed for these locations, we, these bays are much, much deeper than other locations. They can accommodate any vehicle or multiple vehicles parked in back-to-back, because the app is the most expensive component of the entire building, far more than the rest because of the carcinogens, there's multiple things that are going to protect the firefighters from the carcinogens and what they bring back from calls.
Yeah.
Adding a bay adds a significant amount of cost to the project, and if it's not being utilized, it absorbs a ton of energy to operate, so it's a far more sustainable and practical approach to go a deeper, more flexible bay, flexible base than an empty third bay for some potential use somewhere. We need more of these across the entire valley than one large one that's soaking up time and money.
And you've taken that into account, so.
Yes, that's, that's why we came up with this prototype.
Hey, hey, this is not, this is not a full, okay, we, I think it's a great topic. I'm sorry to interrupt. I think it's a great topic. I, I personally believe that the fire department knows a hell of a lot more about how best to do their job than we do. I think these are great questions. The chief has said that he's comfortable with, with the size and space and the design. Um, I, if, if you think a little bit more about how fire calls go out, you know, this station is the first, first response to our five-mile corridor. Uh, if they, as, and it gives them quick access for, for that response. If fires get bigger, these guys call in other, other engine companies. They do that now, today. Um, when we've had the, 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 the land fires that we've had around us uh, this summer, um, more than one fire company was called. Uh, what this does is get us started, and as soon as they see it and they understand what's going on, they may be already putting out the call, which so we've got, you know, we're not trying to fight everything just within this station by ourselves. So again, the fact that the chief has done a lot of thinking about this, he's got a vision for multiple stations going in, how he uses his budget um, with the sales tax ordinance, he's already talking about wanting to put in multiple stations beyond hideout, so that again can grow his response times around the Jordanale. I, I, I don't think we need to overthink the work that these guys have done. I'm very comfortable with the thought process and believe that he, he wouldn't have put forward this design if he didn't think it would work.
Thanks, Mayor. I to- I do agree, and I appreciate you summarizing it in that way. I'm just responding to the limitation. So if the town does think that we may want to relocate public works there, um, I don't think that should stand in the way of, of allowing you to negotiate terms on a long-term lease. Except that if we're really serious about that, I think, you know, in a I'll call it parallel effort, parallel related effort, the town should be getting there an architect to design a concept of a public workstation that would share that total parcel area, so that, you know, we're not just talking in theory anymore. We actually have a concept, just like we have a fire station concept.
We actually do have that concept, Chris.
Oh, well, okay.
I haven't shown it tonight, but uh, Thomas has done some work on that. We have a building design. We have some thoughts around that.
Well, well, great. That's important information if we're concerned about the, the use of the remainder of the buildable property.
So, some work there.
So I, I, I know.
So, but.
Because I, I don't want us tripping over that. If we, if, if that's in progress, great, super. Then that makes even better that we can go ahead and, you know, try to move forward to authorize the mayor to negotiate terms on a long-term lease for the fire, a fire station on town property.
All right, so.
All right. So we do need another motion. If, I don't know, if Jonathan wants to, to try again.
I'd be delighted.
You were willing to ten minutes ago, so I hope you're willing to again.
Are we convinced the discussion has been adequate before I do that?
I'm convinced.
Yeah, I'm good.
Go for it.
Yeah. Well, then I would move that we authorize the mayor to enter into a long-term lease for the purposes of leasing to the Wasatch County Fire Department for the purpose of putting a permanent station on the triangle property.
Great. And so you're being specific about the triangle property, which I'm, I'm happy about as well, so.
You want to second that?
I'm gonna second that.
Okay. Uh, so I'm gonna poll the council. So uh, I think Bob's on. Bob, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Ralph, how do you vote?
Yes, and say thank you, Chief Hales, for all the work you've done, and as well as you, Jonathan. Thanks.
Chris?
Uh, yes, and thanking the mayor on top of that, Ralph.
I'd agree.
And Jonathan?
Thank you.
All right, motion carries. Uh, so Chief, you got a piece of land. We'll figure out how we're gonna, how to make it, make sense for all of us. And uh, we'll, uh, don't worry about it. Don't, don't lose sleep over this portion, part of the process. It'll be fine.
Thanks.
So I'm going to jump up to the council minutes. Because we, because I didn't want to do them at the beginning, because I didn't know how long Bob was gonna be here. These minutes from August and September are, are minutes. Excuse me, I need to have one meeting, please. Uh, these minutes from August and September were meetings that actually Chris chaired, because in August I was uh, out with illness and in September I was away. Um, so I can't vote on those. Carol is not with us tonight. She was at some of those meetings, so it comes down to um, those, that we had enough people that were at the meetings, and Jonathan was away in September as well. We had enough people and that were at the meetings that could approve the council minutes. So that's why I delayed to make sure that Bob was gonna be here to help us with this. So with that, we have three sets of minutes, the regular meeting of August eighth, the truth and taxation meeting of August eighth, and the September council meeting of September eleventh council meeting. So um, since Chris, you were the lead for all of those, I'd like to ask you to sort of lead this.
Yeah, I read them all. I actually read them all. Thank you, Alicia. Read them all um, while I was traveling. And I, I just remembered one typo. I don't have it open in front of me, but um, but it was so insignificant, I don't even think we need to, the minutes were as usual, very high quality, kept, seemed to capture it, captured the, the essence of the meeting. And I, if I can find that typo before you get around to asking everyone else, I'll point it out, but other than that, that was it.
Chris, as long as it doesn't change the substance at all, then you can just email me the typos. That's just fine.
Yeah, there's just one. I think you're, it, yeah, it's just a word that can be spelled in two different ways for different meanings.
Perfect, okay.
And I'll, I'll send that to you when I find it again.
Great.
I read them over as well, so a fabulous job, Alicia. I would just say, you even caught what, what I was most impressed with is in number five, six, and seven, seven under the um, Roman numeral six agenda items, just caught the follow-ups that were actually um, about time that the big ones at least get caught in terms of becoming um, you know, an agenda item, so. Appreciate all the hard work you've done. It's almost like you've, you've, you've written into uh, the minutes uh, the follow-up, so um, boy, we've, we've advanced a bit in the past eighteen months, so thank you.
Yeah.
So I've heard from Chris and Ralph. Um, so it leaves Bob and Jonathan. Any comments on the minutes?
Not for me.
Okay.
I don't have any comments, but uh, I don't, the, I was not at the August meetings.
Right.
I cannot get to meetings above the Arctic Circle.
Yeah.
I think that's why it's even, even, it's even more important that the minutes have been so accurate and complete. And so if you do miss a meeting, I mean, you can see everything that was discussed and the essence of what happened. And as Ralph said, all the follow-ups are, you know, kind of built in. So, so I'm gonna move.
So what I, what I, because I think different people are at different meetings, we're gonna have to approve them one at a time instead of all three, because some, some folks.
Is that true? Is that, I mean, do you have to have been at the meeting to approve the minutes? I don't think so, unless Cameron knows better.
I don't know. I'm asking Cameron.
I would feel uncomfortable voting to approve minutes for a meeting I did not attend, so I would abstain from the September eleventh meeting, because I was not there.
Yeah, so if we can't, if we don't have a quorum to vote on
We do.
all of the minutes together, then we should do them separately.
Okay, so separate.
Yeah, so for example, in the August meetings, we have um, well, we only, we have only two for, well, we have Chris plus Jonathan and Ralph, so we can cover the August meetings. And then in the September meeting, um, it's a different three, but it still works.
Right, so you could do the two August set together.
I can do the two August together instead of a, a fully separate one, yeah, we can do that.
But if you'll make your motion for the September one separate, that would be great.
Yeah. That work for you, Chris? All right, so.
Yes, that works great.
Okay, so I'll need a motion to approve the August eighth town council regular meeting minutes and the August eighth truth and taxation meeting minutes.
So moved.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. So uh, Bob was not there, so he's not gonna do that. So Jonathan?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Ralph?
Yes.
Okay, and then the September minutes? We need a motion to approve the September town council meeting minutes in which Bob was there and Jonathan was not.
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second, yeah.
Thank you, Ralph. All right, Bob?
Yes.
Okay, Ralph?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
Okay, so all minutes are approved. Thank you. I, I do want to make one other comment. Uh, and super kudos to um, to Alicia, because she is fully caught up.
Sorry.
There are no outstanding meeting minutes um, to do except tonight, when we haven't even finished yet. So, uh, so that has taken a lot of work on her part, um, and we are are, we are fully populated, so congratulations to Alicia and super appreciation for all her efforts.
Thank you.
And I'd like to add, and she, she has built a process by which she will not have to fall behind like that again. It was such an incredible manual ordeal um, when, when, when it happened, so um, I think we have confidence that we're going to be able to stay up to date, you know, barring any special circumstances or you know, issues that come up, but, and that's really, really helpful for us, because then we can read um, you know, the most recent minutes and stay closer uh, to the, you know, ongoing follow-up lists of things for us to do, so thank you so much.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks for being patient with me.
All right, so the last item in the public meeting is uh, the committee updates. Um, I don't know, um.
There was one follow-up on the, on the minutes that I had, only one.
Oh, sorry, I forgot about that, Ralph. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, because Alicia's done such a fabulous job of capturing the follow-ups within the next meeting even now, especially the, the big guys. Um, the only one that I caught was um, in the August eighth, page four of seven, um, you know, that, and, and, and it really comes into a little bit of uh, what I would call what Chris started out with in terms of Comcast kind of falling a little bit on their uh, you know, on their faces here a bit, but in line eleven, Comcast has promised us uh, to, you know, that they have budgets set aside for new communities. I think it now becomes even more incumbent, maybe that they come forward with um, you know, how they're going to um, add some value financially, potentially into the community and resolve some of the issues that, that obviously are apparent in some of the, in some of their digging, so. Like that is a follow-up with, with Comcast.
Can I um, chime in on that a little bit?
Sure.
That's me. So um, I have been in touch with Joe and he wanted me to follow up with council on getting something worked out, so the, the, the door is open, so we'll, uh, I'll be looking for an email from me, if you guys will look for an email from me uh, to get that going, that would be great.
Well, I know Jan's got a bunch of ideas, so between the two of you, you know, maybe we can get something together and also get the answer on why, you know, they've uh, have, have fumbled a bit on their digging here, so.
Yeah.
Some answers from Comcast.
So Ralph, my guess is they're working feverishly, right? They are working hard with a lot of crews and working fast, maybe it could, that could have something to do with it. Maybe too fast. You know how it is, right, out, out in the world if you work too fast.
Everything done, yeah.
Right, and I, I, we don't, I don't know, I, I'm looking forward to finding out um, the root cause, you know, if with their issue that we talked about earlier already with the markings and stuff, if, if that's, if that's actually a real problem. Uh, because it could be. We, we, you know, we, we don't want to unnecessarily assign blame if blame belongs elsewhere. Right? If the root cause of their problem is not maybe working too fast or not paying attention to the markings, but actually the markings are not um, accurate enough. You know, we just want to know what the problem is, um.
And my point, Chris, was as much of that, but you know, if you look in the paragraph about, you know, in that paragraph, um, it, they want to support local initiatives that support digital equity. And I think it's important that um, for our low-income housing and any low-income housing in the future, that that might be um, part of what their digital equity would encompass um, as, as, as part of our town's needs.
Equity and literacy too, Ralph. I, I believe they mentioned that, digital literacy, which, you know, I think I mentioned that depending on, you know, your, your generation that you live in, you might have a different digital literacy.
Let's hold them to the fire on that, since they volunteered, you know.
I think, we, we should, but I think they might be waiting for us too, Ralph. You know, we've got
Probably do.
so many, what do they say, irons in the fire or plate spinning already? It's hard to prioritize that right now. Um, so they could be waiting for us too, but I would love it if Jan and/or Alicia, I'm not, Alicia, I think you, you're managing a relationship at the moment, but uh, who, if, if that's a discussion we could get going, because I think we want, we want, we have all good intentions, it's just finding um, the will to get started and be able to finish some kind of an initiative with Comcast.
So Alicia, can you take that as an off, offline item and, and engage Chris and or Ralph um, when you have that conversation?
Absolutely, yep, and Jen. I'll include Jen as well.
Yeah, yeah, again, you know, we have so many priorities, it's hard to juggle them all, and I hate for us to start too many things that we can't finish.
Okay. All right, thanks for that reminder, Ralph. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Um, so now we're gonna move to committee updates. Uh, we've got Peter Ginsberg here with us tonight from the planning commission, so Peter, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Okay, so I'm a last-minute sub. I hope I get this right. So planning commission, uh, we are working on a proposed lot combination of Soaring Hawk subdivision. We are working on uh, town council ordinance regarding updates related to some government bills and technical corrections. Um, we are working with the, um, sorry, with the um, two developments, uh, blanking out, sorry. Um,
Wild horse.
Wild horse and, and, and
Elk, elk something.
Elk horn and Shoreline Phase Four. Those, those meetings have been continuous, those are gonna go on through in October, November.
Okay. Thanks, Peter. Uh, next one is EDC, Ralph?
Yeah, there's been, you know, a fair amount of activity, although not as much as we were having on weekly meetings, but uh, uh, Jan and I and actually Helen met with the Larry H. Miller Company, um, now a second time. I think there's good progress in the confidence that we're building between the town and the executives there within that organization. Of course, the, you know, uh, the Miller family is the, the within that organization. Of course, the, you know, uh, the Miller family is the wealthiest in, in Utah, according to Forbes. So good, what I would call a good long-term partner, potentially for the, for the town. And, um, we, we will potentially have two works, a workshop at their location. And then, um, we're going to probably invite them to the Ross Creek Open House as well. And we'd have a, we'd have a session here. So trying to build that brand credibility and work with some of the best developers, um, if not the best in, in, in the state, so at, at, at a large level. So that's a piece. And then, you know, we haven't finalized the date for the Ross Creek Open House yet, but all of that information is funneling through, you know, Jan and Helen right now to come out with material that will make it, um, call it visually attractive to get people's input when we do have meetings, both in Town Hall or otherwise, we'll probably have to add that in Town Hall in November. We can't just be walking around, um, Ross Creek at, you know, in that environment. But, um, you know, that's, that's the aim there. And, um, you know, uh, I, I, I would just say, you know, JD and Tim Dora, who's kind of like, Tim Dora's been on, on the commission and, uh, committee. And he's, he's potentially leaving and I'm, I'm, I'm going to try to hopefully re-entice him because he's done, he's, he's got some, he's really provided some valuable input. And, um, of course we have Jonathan and Tony and, and Chase Winder, I think is also going to, is also beginning to contribute as well. So just a bunch of great people here that have a lot of experience. And, um, we've got a lot of things in the fire, um, as, you know, Peter just mentioned, that are now coming to, uh, uh, the planning commission for early approvals or early input on what their conceptual ideas are. So I'll stop there. Uh, if Jan's still on, she may want to add something.
She's still on, but I don't know.
You know, I, I think Ralph is doing a great job leading this committee. And we've got some, some suggestions for improving, um, that we're working through. And I think we're, we're headed in the right direction. So thank you, Ralph.
Thank you, Jan. Thank you, Jonathan and Tony and everyone else. JD was, might still be there. I don't know.
All right. Next up is the DR Design Review Committee, uh, Thomas.
Yeah, just a, uh, we don't have any particular project that is currently under review. They're all under construction actually. But just as a reminder, I think that, uh, Alicia had sent out a doodle poll for a site visit to, um, Nate Brockbank's Elkhorn Springs site. If you get a chance, please make sure you complete that so that we can, um, try to schedule maybe one, two, three visits up there before the weather does turn so that you all have an opportunity to see that because that will go back to the planning commission and subsequently, um, assuming it moves forward as planned to the, uh, Town Council.
Good reminder, Thomas. Thank you.
I think I'm on for tomorrow, Thomas. Has anyone gone, uh, for the walkthrough?
Not yet.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Okay. Number four, post.
All right. This is going to be a quick one. I've been away. I just got back at midnight last night. But what I do have is, uh, there was a meeting last week. Uh, it was the vehicle collision, um, the SR two forty-eight, forty-eight wildlife vehicle collision mitigation site visit. Um, it was scheduled for October 2nd, uh, in the morning. I do not know who attended. I haven't heard back from anybody, uh, from hideout, but, um, uh, I, I don't know what happened there, but that meeting, that meeting happened last week. Was anybody there, Mayor? Do you go?
Yeah, there were people, there were people, there were two people there, but I was not one of them because I was, um, out on medical on that day.
Okay. So who was there from hideout? Was it Kathleen and Glennis maybe?
Carol Hazelton.
Okay.
And Kathleen appeared. Um, good discussion. Um, great progress forward.
Well, anything, what's the outcome?
What does great progress forward mean?
And what, Jen, so what did, did Andrea Moser like commit to or whoever was organizing it, commit to? Now circling back with us since now they came here, they traveled here from wherever they are, so they can actually see the area.
Yes, um, and I have to say I had to leave the meeting for another one that was scheduled. So I'm only relying on an update from Kathleen, but, um, UDOT participated and, um, you know, the relationships built and the concerns, um, were, were articulated and I think it was, it was a good meeting. I don't.
Do you know, do you know if they actually looked at our existing wildlife fencing? They saw where it had been taken down for development, which I think is one of the things we talked about with them prior to them coming on site.
I think, I think we need to get Kathleen to get you in the loop, Chris.
Yes, and, and fencing is a very delicate subject. I mean, our insurance company has talked about fencing, so let's talk about this online or offline.
Okay. So more work to be done in the, the committee, but that, that did, that site visit did happen last week and I don't have any better information.
And progress forward. So yes.
Okay. Thanks, thanks for being there at least part of the time, Jan. And I'll, I'll talk to Kathleen at some point soon.
I'm sorry, Chris, but I didn't have a choice.
No, that's, uh, understandable. And I'm sorry too, for you.
Um, we don't have any input on the transportation committee because Carol's off tonight. We'll get that next time. Um, I have, uh, I have a specific need for us to go into closed session. I promise it will be quick. Um, because, uh, uh, I have a discussion of pending a reasonable, reasonably imminent litigation, personnel matters, deployment of security personnel, devices or systems and or sale, acquisition of real property as needed. So I need a, I need a motion to close the public portion of the meeting and move the council into, um, into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Uh, Bob? Okay.
Yes, yes.
Sorry. Ralph, okay?
Yes.
Jonathan, okay?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
Okay. So I declare the public session closed and, uh, I need to move to, um, closed session. So Alicia, you can stop the recording and, uh, all of you just log back in on the same link for the meeting. And I will open the meeting for, uh, for the closed session.
Okay. So we'll meet right at the top of the hour, nine o'clock.
Yeah, just, this will be quick. I, I know you may need bio breaks, but please just, I'm getting tired and, um, I need to get this covered. So.
Okay. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Everybody. Thanks for all your participation tonight.